I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 12, 2010, meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. If everyone would just please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. And I guess it's been pretty hot lately and I noticed that a lot of the lawns are kind of burning up, so... We have not gotten any word on any restrictions from any of the water precincts, so if we do, we will always pass those things along if we ever hear of them. Phil, how are you?
Good.
Good.
We did get a notice from DES on the testing of the Plague and Mountain Base Pond.
Okay. And is there a narrative on that?
No. Piece per milligram is right on the top.
Okay.
One was, what, four?
Right, one's at four, another one was at 10.
Eighty-eight is the danger point.
Okay. So, and that was for both Mountain Base Pond and the Glen Lake Beach, and both are within acceptable E coli limits if anybody wants to see that.
Thank you.
Before we go to the minutes, while Phil is getting situated, I'll just go, I'll do the announcements. We did receive a cute little note from one of our younger citizens, and it was from Aiden Hughes of Mast Road in Goffstown, and he wrote a letter to Officer Ryan, help me with the name here, I don't think it's that, is it? No. Nope, nope. It's Officer Ryan.
Yes.
"Thank you for finding my belt, I thank you also for contacting PAC 99, sincerely, Aiden Hughes." Evidently, he must have lost it, and one of the officers found it and returned it to him, so congratulations there. Next is, we do have some minutes to accept, does everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? The first one that I'd like to approve is the public minutes of June 21st. We have a motion to approve, is there a second? I'll second it.
Just this one page?
Yes.
Right.
That's the only one that can change, I recommend it change.
Correct. Is there any questions or comments on that? Not hearing any, all those in favor of accepting the public minutes of June 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Who did the second, I'm sorry?
I did it.
Okay.
The non-public of also of June 21?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that as well. And are there any corrections to that? Not seeing any, hearing any, all those in favor of accepting the non-public minutes of June 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's also unanimous, thank you. Next is the June 28th minutes, and we'll do public first. Is there a motion to accept with or without any corrections?
Motion to accept with corrections.
Second. Do you have that, Catherine?
If I fill with corrections, second by date.
Yes, if you would just state the corrections.
Page six?
Page six.
First paragraph, second sentence from the bottom, should be "train his driver" instead of "train is driver." Just add an H in front of the IS.
Got it.
Okay.
Correction on the same page.
Correction on the same page, page six.
Bottom paragraph, where I stated I would not be opposed to having a temporary position to the end of the year and take money from the road plan. If we could clarify that, I stated that I did not want that to be a position, that it should be a contract out versus hiring someone on as a position.
Anything else? Not hearing anything, all those in favor of accepting the public minutes of June 28th, say aye.
Aye.
Phil, you an aye on that?
Yeah.
Oh, that's five, nothing. That's unanimous, and then the non-public, same date, June 28th.
Motion to accept the non-public minutes.
Is there a second? Second by Selectmen Campesano, any discussion? Changes, no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero again. And then we have non-public minutes of June 7th. Is there a motion to accept? You have a motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Phil's got it then, any changes? Not hearing any, all those in favor of accepting the non-public minutes of June 7th, say aye.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Yes, that's five, zero. We're good with the minutes. Now is our time for public comment, if you'd like to address the board, feel free to come on up. All I ask is that you state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to about three minutes or so. Anyone like to address the board? Okay, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is we have Chief Sullivan and Parks and Rec Director Rick Wilhelmi, and they're here to discuss a report on the Glen Lake Beach activity from May 29th to July 5th. And gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind coming up, while you're coming up, just to, for those of you who may be in the viewing audience or in the audience here who may not know, we did receive some concerns from a resident, and I don't really think it was just one resident, I think that person probably represented other residents, who had some issues with littering on the beach, conduct of people at the beach, at the Glen Lake Beach, and at that time, the board had a very lengthy discussion and directed the Police Department and the Parks and Rec Department to, one, on the Police Department side, to ramp up enforcement of existing ordinances and additional patrols, and to report back, that's why you're here, and on the Parks and Recreation side, more of an increased effort to try to monitor the littering and try to keep it clean, et cetera, and that is why our Parks and Rec Director, Rick Wilhelmi, is here. So, we can start off with you, Chief, if you would be so kind.
Certainly. The Glen Lake waterfront is currently open to the public. All the concerns of trash and use have come to the forefront this year. It's been an ongoing problem for well over the past 20 years that I've been involved in the police department here in Goffstown. Overall, the incidents are weather-driven, so it's very difficult to predict when and where we need personnel there, other than on-duty patrol personnel as far as law enforcement. We also looked at Mountain Base Pond in addition to Glen Lake, and these are two of the public areas in town. Mountain Base is for residents only presently. That's not to say it's not without its problems. Within the last four years, we've had a stabbing and a shooting up there, and that involved town residents. Our project began just prior to Memorial Day, two prongs, awareness, to inform the people that we're going to conduct extensive patrols, for lack of a better word, undercover patrols, plainclothes patrols, as well as further enforcement. The second part was the enforcement action. As a result of that, and I've attached in the report, there were a total of 38 patrols conducted at Glen Lake Beach itself. We spent 33.74 man-hours at a cost of about $813 of that enforcement, resulting in one arrest, six summonses, and four warnings, that's just for town ordinances or violation of state law. That's not the parking violations. We issued 89 parking violations. We received payment of $1,500 in fine of the $2,175 due, and that was of last Friday. So, there may have been some that's come in since then, but I grabbed the information we had up until Friday. During the weekend of the 4th, which was perhaps the busiest time during the entire time we were tasked with this study, we were only able to put an officer on the beach in plainclothes one day out of the four, several reasons. Number one, it's a heavy vacation time for me, I couldn't get coverage, I looked even to pay overtime, and no one wanted it. Secondly, my patrol units, on that Friday night, we received a call of a burglar that involved over 19 guns. And instead of going with the enforcement at the beach, we focused on the guns, and subsequently recovered at least 11 of those guns, with three arrests. So, weighing guns versus beach, I'm going to side with the guns each time. For Mountain Base Pond, let's see here. We conducted 23 additional patrols at Mountain Base. We expended 6.76 man-hours at a cost of $198.36. We issued one possession of alcohol violation by a town resident. There were no fines issued for parking there. The problem with Mountain Base Pond, it's also used for the trail to access the mountain as well. So, to enforce parking up there even by non-residents is difficult. Finally, looking at the last three years, 2010, we've got $1,500 in fines, 2009, $1,625, and 2008, $2,375. So, actually, with all that enforcement effort, the actual amount of fines and the amount of vehicles that we're dealing with at the beach have gone down this year.
Any questions from the board? I'm sure there will be at some point.
Chief, the parking over at the Glen Lake School?
Correct.
What are the issues that you encountered there?
There are several issues. Number one, we're seeing on the hot days 20 to 30 cars at any given time over at Glen Lake School. There is a sign that says "Parking for school business only," but a sign does not make an ordinance. So, I'm very hard-pressed to enforce that sign for parking in school parking lot. There's no ordinance to back that sign up.
Thank you.
If there was an ordinance, Chief, how would you enforce that? How would you determine if they were there in school business?
You would have to look around and expend other man-hours to determine whether there's an event going on at the school and/or if they're at the playground, and had they been to the playground and decided to go over in between their romps and the playground, et cetera, so... The access and exit lanes from Glen Lake School, do you enforce the no parking there? No, it's school property.
Regarding an ordinance, if they had, if they had something to the effect, parking in designated areas only?
At the school?
At the school. And then they had their parking areas designated as parking areas, would you then be able to ticket individuals on the lawn on either the entrance or the exit?
We have been ticketing on the lawn, because the ordinance says parking in designated spaces presently. So, if they're parked on the lawn, yes, we ticket them. If they're parking on the pavement, no, we do not ticket them.
Is that designated, is that a designated parking area?
It's not, but again, we've got 20 or 30 vehicles parking up there, and there is more than enough room to fit another 10 or 15 up there at minimum. So, you're going to have more people just move from there up into the parking spaces themselves in the school.
But I'm just, I'm confused. If they're parked in the entrance or the exit on the pavement, and that's not a designated parking area, we can't ticket them?
On the pavement, correct.
That's not a designated parking area?
Correct, but that's inside the school property. Once it's adjacent to the road.
Got you, that's what I was talking, okay.
We ran into very minuscule amounts of people parking in the driveways. We've got the vast majority using the parking spaces up inside the school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
Yes, I have been going there at night, Rick's seen me there going at night just to see what it looks like at night. First, I got a question regarding alcohol, were you finding alcohol there as you went there?
If we found alcohol, we took enforcement action.
Okay, because the barrels always had alcohol in it, I'm not talking.
That may very well be, but my issue is with that is if it does not occur in our presence, I can't go through people's coolers, I can't go through their cars to see if they've got alcohol. If they see the blueberry coming down the beach, we're going to hide it.
I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm just trying to put some things, because there is a lot of alcohol there, is going on there.
More than likely, yes.
Not more than likely, I'm saying I've looked in the cans, there's a lot of alcohol out there.
Okay.
Okay. Second thing I wanted to ask regarding that is that if this was, let's say if we were to look further in the future and decide if we wanted someone there to monitor it, shall we say, like summer help or school help, would this be advisable for this area for the type of actions that are taking place there?
They may be able to monitor it, they're not going to be able to enforce them all.
They won't, okay, but would they be able to control the crowd, I'm not crowds, but I mean, ask people not to do certain things there, or do you think it'd be something that would still need someone more of a...
You're going to need more an authority figure.
More authority figure.
Okay. All right. We can, we can come back to the chief, let's just get Rick's, Rick's take on things. So, Rick, if you wouldn't mind just sharing what your experience has been during that same time period?
It's, you know, as Chief said, it is, it's busiest most during the hot, hot weather, and we're seeing a lot of that, so it has been very busy. You know, there's six, six trashcans over there right now, kind of spread out, basically from the porta potty north over towards the picnic area, and they're in pretty good spots, good locations, people are using them. People aren't using them. You know, I guess there's no way to say it, I mean, as much accessibility to these trashcans you put out there, trash is still being left on the ground, and you still have to come through and clean it up and put it up there. We spend about two hours a day doing trash, and whether you come in an hour in the morning or you spend a little more time in the evening, depending on the flow, kind of bounce it around that way, put all the trash in the back of the truck and haul it over to the transfer station, so... You know, I don't think the, the cans in the, in the place where they are, sure, that's helping, you know, I think that does help, but I was hiking in North Conway this past weekend, from doing the moats, ended up in Diana's Bath, come down into Diana's Bath, and what do you got, granola wrappers, three of them, right there on the ground. Trash is trash, we're going to always have to pick it up, and we're always going to have to tend to it in a public area.
Any questions?
I have one question. As far as Mountain Base, do we have those same issues? I mean, you're talking about the trash over here, do we have trash problems in Mountain Base? Do we have alcohol prob, I mean, you said you had an arrest, arrests that involve alcohol at Mountain Base, which is residents only.
Correct.
Do we have the same issue as far as type the trash?
We have the same type of issues.
Alcohol containers at Mountain Base?
Yes.
It is, I mean, I must say, I mean, spent a lot of time there, and in May, when we first started this, there was an enormous amount of beer cans and stuff like that. Coming down into where we are now, I think the enforcement process has absolutely helped, because they're, they're still cans. I mean, there's still alcohol there, but it's definitely has cut down compared to where it was. So, I think that is a good thing.
Steve, you want to add something?
Yeah, well, I've got a couple of points to make, and I did see Rick there, I went there the night of Father's Day, and to your credit, Rick, you were there with your wife cleaning up the park and the things that were being found with beer bottles, diapers, trash, and we're talking within arm's reach of the trash barrel. Probably not the best thing for Parks and Rec Director on the night of Father's Day, but it gives much to your credit, because I know Rick's got a big heart, and he's trying to keep that park clean and do a good job. The other question I wanted to ask, and I didn't get a chance to follow it with the chief, is all these parking tickets. With these parking tickets, we'll know if they're residents or not. Were these parking tickets, were they residents or non-residents?
We don't run them to see.
We don't run, we didn't run anything to see with that.
Well, the only time we would run them to find out who owned the car, as if the tickets were not paid.
Okay. So, I guess my other question would be then, is going to be to you, Rick, do you see this as something that, I think we're going there every night and picking up, is this something that would have to be the norm then, to keep this place clean on a nightly basis?
I think if you want to meet the expectations of the community, the concerned individuals of the area, absolutely. You're going to have to always go over there, you're going to have to pick it up every single night, especially on those busy, busy days. You know, the other thing too is, some of the stuff might go into the cans, but you also have animals, so you got to pick the right time when to pick it up. We've found now, what we've been trying to do is in the evening, is when you go over, because we, we're picking up in the morning, then letting it go all day into the next morning. Tried that experiment, you know, and then we said, okay, fine, let's do it in the evening, come back, there's a little less trash, trash in the area. So, some of it could be varmints, kind of knocking it around too, but it's never going to go away.
Early in this period, you removed the enclosures where there were trash totes, large totes like at homes.
They were removed, yeah.
Yes, removed, and you placed the six trash barrels down closer to the beach where the people would put their blankets. I know you, you weren't around at that time, but how frequently were those totes emptied? Did anybody in your staff ever tell you?
Totes on the roadside?
Yes, the totes from, say, last summer.
My, somebody want to help me here, I mean, I'm not really sure. I think it was picked up maybe once a week?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, twice a week, I don't know.
I thought from what DPW said, they pick it up daily. So, I thought they said.
Anyways.
When they were here.
But that was a DPW task, for their truck to come by and the one arm to pick up the tote. So, this is a new responsibility for your staff this year.
In all honesty, I think it makes the most sense. I mean, yes, it's labor productive, but putting the cans closer down to the area will help with it. You know, putting them up on the roadside, just, I don't think it'll work. They do have to be down closer, but the bottom line is, you're going to still have to walk through there every single day. Thank you.
Chief, if I can go back, on the Mountain Base Pond, now that's a resident-only pond. And I noticed there's 20-some-odd enforcement patrols where you check the beach for residents.
Correct.
There's nothing here, were there any individuals found to not be residents?
If they were, they would have done enforcement action there, and from my understanding, there was none.
And how would that, in other words, if you're a police officer, I'm on the beach, I'm in my bathing suit, you come over to me, how would you check if I'm a resident?
You're going to ask people, are you residents?
And if they say yes?
Do you have any identification?
Like Arizona.
So, you would check each individual, so each time, each of these patrols, they ask for identification?
They may, not always. If there's a large group, they're going to ask for them, if there's one or two people. Sometimes you'll have a mother and a couple of children standing there, and there may, may or may not be a car. So, they may not, if there's no car. But again, they, they're going to ask, if they don't have identification, they have to go back to the car, identify the car, or with them, get in the car and see if there's a registration or something.
I'm going to open this up, which I ordinarily wouldn't do, it's not really a thing for public comment, but Collins, you're here, if you were not partly, you were responsible for this whole Glen Lake Beach, so I'm going to give you the courtesy if you'd like to... I'm saying, you spearheaded this thing.
Let me clarify, I'm not responsible.
No, 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 I clarify that. You were the one who spearheaded the effort to beautify it, et cetera, to, you know, to where it's at. And I think because of that, I think you're a larger stakeholder than, than the average Joe. So, if you would, if you have any questions or comments that you want to add?
Well, thanks, and I do have a vested interest, as you mentioned, and, you know, I was very involved with securing the monies. And remember, this whole improvement project was done without any cost whatsoever to the Goffstown taxpayers. I think that was tremendous. But I think, and I understand the enforcement issues are one thing, but I think there's two issues that we're missing here. One of the issues is the intensity of use on the property. You know, this is a very small piece of property, it's a narrow strip of land, it's not a very big piece of land. The grant money was secured through what's called a Section 309 grant through, through the Department of Environmental Services. Now, it's a shoreline stabilization project. If you recall, prior to this, it was all sand, there was a lot of sediment that was being transported into, into the lake along with all the pluton loading that went with it. That was what really gave us the leg up to get the grant, to secure it, to stabilize the shoreline. So, when we see this intensity of use, the shoreline is becoming destabilized again. There are too many people using it, the vegetation is being trampled, that's what provides the stabilization in the soil and holds the soils in place, so it's really undoing the work that we did with the 309 grant money. It's way too overused, the intensity is way, way too much. We did an extensive study before we applied for the grant. We looked at the appropriate level of use, both in individuals using the waterfront area, as well as a number of boats. We did what's called a carrying capacity analysis of Glen Lake. We looked at the boats that were on the lake that residents owned, we looked at how many boats the lake can comfortably handle, and there are, like, like I say, there are use analysis that you can do, they call them carrying capacities on lake, and that's exactly what we did, and that's how we came up with a number of eight boat trailer spaces over there. So, there was a lot of thought that went into the proper intensity of use down there. That's why we limited the parking spaces, that's why we limited the boat trailering spaces. So, that's one issue. The other issue I feel strongly about is the fact that Goffstown taxpayers, once it was built, are now responsible for maintenance and upkeep of this area, and picking up trash is only one of them. We were fortunate, a couple of weeks ago, that we got a volunteer group from, from one of the local churches to come down, about 20 people graciously donated their time to eradicate it of invasive species, specifically Japanese bamboo, trim the shrubs, pick up the trash, pull the weeds, trim up the limbs, do a lot of work down there. Twenty of, twenty of them put in two hours of work, so, you know, there's 80, 40 hours of work that went in down there by volunteers. But had we not been able to do that, somebody would have had to do it. Some, some volunteer group or our own, our own forces here in town. And I also have a concern that, since taxpayers are paying for it, and since it was local people who put in all of their, got private donations to reconstruct the site back in 2002, that, that says a lot for the citizens of Goffstown. The citizens of Goffstown shouldn't have to be expected to get up at nine o'clock in the morning, race down to Glen Lake to beat everybody else there so that they can get a parking space so that they can use the very recreational facility that their taxpayer dollars go towards supporting. And I think that says a lot. What I'd like to recommend is that the town utilize some resources. For instance, there's a PlanLink, which is an online sharing of information, and I'm sure, in fact, I know that our planning department utilizes it. I think the town ought to go out and just put the question out there, how many towns own parcels with beaches and waterfront? If you do, do you restrict it to residents? If yes, how do you do it? What ordinances do you have? If you allow non-residents for a fee, how is your fee structured? And I think we ought to take that survey, and I think, take that information, consider it, and come up with some sort of a comprehensive plan that's fair to both residents and non-residents. I'm not saying we keep residents out, but, you know, let's make, let's make this fair, let's make the playing field level for, for everybody. That's kind of my big vision, I don't want to take a whole bunch behind.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm on the same page. I think early on, I'm not sure if it was you or Guy Karen when he was in, but, you know, I think we talked about a little bit of a process. Let's see what the step of enforcement, how that would, how that would go. My sense is that we need to probably establish some sort of an ad hoc committee of key stakeholders to look at what you just said, do the research, what publicly-owned beaches are there, and then how do they manage it? You know, what are some of the things, creative ways we can do to try to approach it, and then come back to the board with a recommendation? I think Guy mentioned that, you know, he thought it would be inevitable that maybe this would even end up on the ballot, even by petition. I think that's probably very accurate, and although I, I think I shared my position where I wanted to do it in a more staggered approach, to see, let's try the enforcement first and see what that yields, and let's try maybe, you know, parking stickers is another approach, before we just totally eliminate or exclusively use it for Goffstown residents. That was my opinion, the people have come, talked to me, and it's a wide variety of people, they want it, they want it for Goffstown residents only. The vast majority of them. And that's not what I would personally do, but I don't, I have to listen to constituents, and they want to go one way. And I suspect that if we did put it, if it was a warrant article, I think it would go that way. I would rather go through a process of having some, a committee, really do the legwork and talk about the pros and the cons, so that it's not, you know, oh, we might not get our fish stocked, or this might, we might be sued because we didn't do this, or we might have to pay back money. Let's just have a group of people investigate all the different issues, come back to the board, and let's make a decision on it. and let's make a decision on it, and, and this way, if it, even if it does go to a petition, warrant article, that dialogue and that, that, um, that work has already been done. So that's just my opinion.
If I may, I would agree with you, I think that's the appropriate, appropriate way to go, and I happily serve on any sort of an ad hoc committee, because there are a lot of misconceptions out there. The thing, the, the issue about not stocking fish, the issue about not having it open for boat trailers and fishing, there, those are misconceptions, they're just not true. And those need to be dispelled. And I'm not saying personally that it needs to be restricted to Goffstown residents only, I'm just saying it needs to be fair, it needs to be equitable somehow. And maybe we do need to expand and allow a little bit more parking there by utilizing some of the spaces at the Glen Lake school, but I was there on July 4th, which was a Sunday of the holiday weekend, and I counted over fifty-five cars in there, and there was, there must have been two hundred people at least on that waterfront, and it just could not handle it. If you went by the next day, the vegetation was trampled down, the shrubs were busted up, I mean, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense.
I'll have David first.
When, when Collis is through. No, okay, please, okay. I support the idea of a, of a committee, but I wanna bring that role over to the Park and Rec Commission, since this is their park. They ought to be doing the study with ad hoc members if necessary, assistance from the police department, to bring a recommendation back to this board. And with examination of all the ramifications. And I'm gonna take the opportunity to, to say, one of the ramifications is an RSA 507 that grants towns immunity from liability, well, for some very specific recreational activities. But court cases have expanded those recreational to be general recreation areas, hiking, bicycling, swimming. And in order for the immunity provisions to apply, and I'm reading from a course that Selectment Attent offered by Local Government Center, and I believe the Local Government Center provides our property liability. In order for immunity provisions to apply, the recreation property must be open to members of the general public, and there must be no charge for use of the property. Local Government Center makes the following recommendations. Governing bodies should obtain legal advice and consult with liability coverage carrier before imposing rules that might exclude the general property, general public from the property. The municipality likewise should do that consulting if you're gonna charge a fee for the recreational activities. I asked a lawyer who worked for Rec, with the Local Government Center, if we charge a fee for the parking, and essentially that is the only parking one could have in a reasonable area, are we charging a fee for use of the beach? And the answer was yes.
Well, if I, if I could, and for the sake of times, we do have another thing going on, it's at six thirty. I'm gonna, Steve, I'm gonna have you.
Those are my points.
Yeah, Steve, I'll have you, you have one last comment, then Rick, then I'm gonna close it. We can, we can recon, after our swearing in, we can certainly come back to this, but.
If we're gonna come back, you wanna just come back later then?
We can come back to it.
I just wanna say something, well, Collis is here, because Collis is absolutely right. When we talked about that, that's how we arrived at the number of spaces across the world for boat trailers, because we had a discussion at that point in time about leaving some area for future expansion of it, and that's the, the, the amount, the intensity of the use on there. That's why we did only the eight, we didn't have a future expansion area, and that's part of the reason why that no parking area was expanded further down on both sides, beyond to try to reduce that, and keep it to exactly those spaces. And that's exactly why, in that ordinance across the street, you have to have a trailer. If you don't have a trailer, you're in violation.
Okay, what I'm gonna do now is, I'm trying to keep us on target. We can revisit this, and we will revisit this at around seven fifteen. But right now, we do have some business with the fire department, and it's not often that we swear in a new firefighter. So we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on this discussion, and we're gonna come back to it at probably around seven fifteen. So I'd like to invite Chief O'Brien up.
And his.
While we're doing the swearing in, I'd like to do the donation of equipment first. Good evening, I'd like to introduce, this is my son, Patrick O'Brien.
Hi, Patrick.
Interesting story is, Patrick, Patrick went with me to recently down to the New England Fire Chiefs Expo, which was in Springfield, Mass. And a lot of times, a lot of the vendors that are there, they have open raffles where you just put your name in, in a hat, and for particular items. In this particular case, there was some rescue equipment called Turtle Cribbing, this is just one, one piece. And typically, I don't win these things, so Patrick says, I'd like to put my name in. I says, sure, put your name into it, what could happen? Well, throughout the weekend, thousands of entries were put in the hat, and then we get a phone call late on Sunday, said, said that Patrick had won. So with that, it was about.
You don't want it for your room?
So with that, Patrick, we've got, it's, it's just components like this, which, which is quite interesting. It's composite material, and it's used to stabilize vehicles after they wreck, so rescuers can get in there and perform first aid and rescue and extrication. What's nice about this stuff compared to the stuff we have currently is just wood. And it absorbs contaminants and fuel and other things that's spilling unseen, versus this will not barely absorb all those contaminants in, in combustibles. So with that, the whole package arrived, and, and it's valued about fifteen hundred dollars. With that, Patrick and the O'Brien family would like to donate the, the entire package to the Goffstown Fire Department.
Thank you very much.
All right, very nice.
So the tax donation form goes to your son, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for thinking of us, and good job. Patrick, would you mind going and get me some Mega Millions and Powerball tickets?
All right, with that, we can move on to the swearing in.
Sure.
Just that works. Okay, let me go get the.
The appointment papers are in the signature folder? See, you might wanna pull one out so you can read it.
Is it in that one or the other ones?
Yeah, it's in this one, that's the.
Yeah.
I see you made it.
Yes, I did. Good to see you again.
Same here.
Gotta make it official. Okay, we're ready.
Well, good evening, thank you for coming, this is something special for the fire service. I don't wanna block, block the way here. Something special for, for the fire, fire service is progression within our organization, war in the fire service period. There is different levels, you have volunteers in the fire service, you have, you have called firefighters that are in the fire service, and the ones that, that choose to have their career in the fire service. And for many of us, it's progression. And for myself, and, and almost all the folks that are, that are full-time, have once either volunteered or, or called firefighter, and eventually decided, this is, this is what my calling is, and decided to take it on as a career. It is, is a huge step, it's a huge step of faith to do that. And like I always said, the fire service is a family. And when we have somebody from within our own organization decide to make their career in the fire service, it's a proud moment for us. And in 2008, Joey actually came to Goffstown Fire Department as a called firefighter. Thought it'd be something he might be interested in, and we supplied with the training, he supplies with a lot of, a lot of time and effort, and it's paid off. And now Joey feels that he, he would like to take this on as a career. And we welcome that because we feel we've got a great, great guy. Joey Boucher has been on the call for us again since the 2008. He, uh, he came to us just fresh in some, some wide eyes, and he has, since then, become a firefighter one. He's got his EMT, progressed to certified firefighter level two, and just recently completed your EMT intermediate? Or almost done?
Almost done.
Almost done. So that's, again, that's hours and hours, in just two, two years, he spent hundreds of hours training, outside training and departmental training, and that's something to commend anybody who does that. So with that said, we do have a ceremony where we, we swear you in. And with that, I introduce Scott Rose, the chairman of the Boris Lucker.
Hi. Welcome, everyone, again, this is a, a nice time. We don't often swear in firefighters or police officers, so it was a great celebration when we do that. Whereas there is a vacancy in the office of firefighter in the Town of Goffstown Fire Department, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of said office, we do hereby appoint you, the said Joey Boucher, a firefighter of the said town, and upon taking your, taking the oath of office and having this appointment and the certificate of said oath of office recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liabilities of such office until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. So now I'm gonna do the, the oath for you. Aye, state your name.
Aye. I'm sorry, Joey Boucher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the United States Constitution.
Agreeably to the United States Constitution.
Rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the ordinances of the Town of Goffstown.
And the ordinances of the Town of Goffstown.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The next step, just a step in your career, because we hope to have Joey here for his entire career, which could span twenty to thirty years, is the pinning of his badge. And who would you like to do that?
I'd like my memey.
All right.
It's an honor.
Be very careful, he's sensitive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and there'll be a small reception across the street at our fire station right after. So, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna be taking, I guess, about a thirty-minute recess right now, the board will, and we'll be back at around seven fifteen, so we could. Join in the celebration. More discussion you think we're gonna have on this waterfront thing? What do you think?
Just one quick comment, which is.
Do you have comments, more additional comments to make?
I made my comment.
Okay. And you have one comment.
I would like to comment.
Nick, do you have any comments? Are we leaning in the direction of going with an ad hoc committee? I mean, I'm sorry, charging it to Parks and Rec to have them, you know, refine some of the issues, coming up with some possible solutions, I, I don't.
Do you wanna speak?
No, go ahead.
I'll let you go first.
That, that's a, that's a good move. That's what Phil usually does, okay.
I'd, I'd like to see this board form the ad hoc committee, and then if we wanted to charge them to work with the Parks and Rec Commission, I, I, I don't wanna just turn it over to Parks and Rec. I think it's a, it's a much bigger issue than just that.
Okay. There he is, the buffet king.
Look who's talking. The first guy over there.
That's my role, that's chair. It's a.
Food tester.
Food tester, digger, Terry type thing. All right.
On a ser, on a serious note, on, on the ad hoc committee, et cetera, my comment is, and it's always been the same, when we look at the lake, you can put less than half percent of the town's population can go there and access it. That's if, that, that's if all eighteen cars had four people in it. So it's always been an access problem. We started coming into this year, understanding the problem that's been there for decades. One of my points during that process was that we were gonna sit through this period and be at the same spot we were when we started, which is where we are now. The same spot we started two, two months ago, or a month ago. I expected that. We all knew that was gonna happen, here we are again. So if we're going to, um, so the question's still in front of us, and all we've done is delayed it.
Okay.
Okay, let me finish. If you're going to go in committee, which I think, once again, is just another way of what I call postponing the inevitable decision of what needs to be made, then I would like to think that we're going to put dates and what we're going to expect. In other words, I don't wanna be sitting back here again after a committee with a month and saying, well, what should we do? It's parking, it's this, it's that.
If I could just interrupt, I, I think that's where, what we should do right now is talk about dates, what is the charge, and then we can talk about who is gonna be charged with doing it. But I heard a couple of things from Collis which resonated with me. One is that this committee needs to have discussions about the intensity of use of the site, and to revisit what the original plans were, revisit what the original recommendations were, and, and take a look at the intensity of it. It defeats the purpose of soil erosion, et cetera, if you have, you know, two hundred people on that site. So I think that's something that has to get looked at. I think the maintenance and operation of it, and when I, and, and when I say maintenance and operation, that, that's more of a, that is a Parks and Rec component, but I also look at it, it's an enforcement thing, which brings, brings the police into it. The other thing that I had heard loud and clear was, what, what priority are the citizens of Goffstown gonna get here? You know, is it, what type of equity, the citizens of Goffstown are, are paying the freight for, for this beach, and, and should they be giving preference, should it be exclusivity? Should it not be exclusivity, or somewhere in between, but that has to, has to be looked at? And then I think, which we haven't really discussed, is, you know, what are the costs of, of, of properly patrolling and maintaining this, because they do have budget implications, and I think those have to also be put, put, put down. Those are the four, you know, types of things, and if there are any recommendations, you know, that, that come of it, but those seem to be the four critical areas. Now, is there anything else that you think we need to take a look at? And I'll start with David, then I have you.
I would put number five on that list is to ensure that the liability is adequately looked at.
Okay, liability.
If you start limiting or imposing a fee.
Okay.
And what would be the cost of covering that liability?
That's for the committee to understand.
Well, what I'm saying, that, that would be part of that statement, in other words, what are the liabilities that the town would incur if we were to charge or, you know, impose a fee? And how could those liabilities be overcome? Purchasing an insurance policy maybe.
I think the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish here is that if there were to be a Q and A, or let's just say we had a public meeting on this, what are some of the questions that we think that residents would, would ask concerned citizens? And what would, we should kind of think of, that committee needs to think of a lot of those things. Obviously, it centers around these four or five key points that we mentioned, and then come up with what is, what has the research showed as, as kind of the answer.
Okay, I wanna go back to process of, of this committee and what, what we're looking for in result, okay? As I, as we go around this board, I know there's all these different opinions from one end of the spectrum to the other. And if the committee gets together, they come back, and they have a recommendation. Are we gonna accept that recommendation, or if it doesn't, or, or is it, or if it doesn't fit all the perimeters? Are we rehashing it, are we looking for three different plans? Are we looking for one plan, shall we say that's a town? I don't say, I don't wanna be here a month from now again, doing the same thing. Well, they recommended this, like, you know, you know, and we're gonna study this. I wanna know what they're, and what we're looking for in the end result.
All right, what I'm looking for as an end result, which I think we all should be looking for as an end result, is there are a lot of questions that have come up, which mayor, you know, and we've had a lot of issues, oh, fishing game won't restock, we have a liability issue, you know, what, what do the citizens feel? All these things, all I want is to have that committee do the. All I want is to have that committee do the, do the legwork, come back to our board so that we can then make an educated decision as to how to proceed. Short of us doing it on our own, that's why we're gonna charge, you know, others to work on it, and some people have a lot of background in it. And then from there, you know, we can, we can make a decision. I mean, ultimately, that decision may be taken out of our hands anyway, because if there are people in the town who want it to be exclusive to the community or not, then they can, they can put it on a petition article.
Then let me, then let me jump on that for a minute. It's going that way. I mean, we know it's going that way. If it doesn't become a town beach, that article's coming. I think that article will pass. I think it's, I think it's important upon us to look at this, that if we're gonna have recommendations and questions, which I'm not sure how much time we need to go through this, that, I mean, this thing's been kicking around long enough. I think we should, if anything, have two sets of plans, or even a third plan, that we can look at it, be it as a town beach, as one that's in a hybrid, or the combination of two, et cetera. But I don't want to be trying to take all these pieces and sitting here through, sitting with five of us talking about it again. I know myself personally, I'm prepared to say I'd like to see it as a town beach, I think that's well-known.
Okay. I'm hearing you.
And so, I just don't want to, you know, so...
I'm hearing you. Within the five things that we discussed, and I think the minutes have, hopefully have accurately captured them, and Sue, do you, do you got that, the five? What I'm also hearing is at the end, at the end of this report, you're gonna want some sort of, what are the pros and cons of it being exclusive, Goffstown residents only? Then there's also the pros and cons of a hybrid approach, where there may be spots or designated for Goffstown residents only, or some sort of a pay-as-you-go thing for those who are not from town, et cetera. And then there would be a kind of a status quo as we're, you know, as we're doing it now.
Correct. I don't find a status quo.
It's almost, it's like a, you're creating a, you know, it's almost like a decision matrix as to, you know, what are, you know, what are those pros and cons, and you can have the costs associated with it. Some of those costs won't, you know, won't be known, because you still have to have enforcement, even if it was Goffstown residents only. So I think if we go ahead and we do that, and I think, Steve, with all due respect, even if it does come to the inevitable petition article, I would rather have that dialogue and that discussion from a committee who's looked at it and studied it, saying, okay, in our opinion, we took a look at these things, and here is the answer to what some of your, you know, what some individual constituents' concerns are. And this way, they can have that dialogue at a deliberative session, or at least have knowledge before they vote. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. So I spoke my piece, so, so I think we've, we've kind of firmed out where we want to go in terms of what we want this committee to take a look at. We've heard that there should be an ad hoc committee by those in the select board, I guess would, could create it and fill the vacancies to serve on it. I've heard, charge it to the Parks and Rec Commission, let's have a discussion on that, and then we can, we can proceed, because I think that's where we're at now.
I kind of think, in thinking about what you just talked, because it sounds like it's more of an information gathering, we have questions, we need answers. I think the process of putting a committee together will probably take longer than the amount of time needed to get all those answers.
We already have a committee together.
So maybe if we just select a few people that have already volunteered, if you want to call it an ad hoc committee, but, you know, nothing formal and just tonight, or tomorrow, charge them with getting those answers, give them two or three weeks to come back to us, and, I mean, it's not like they have to go out and do research, or count traffic, or we've already done the month and a half, or five weeks of enforcement studies, and then we can get on to the business of making a decision and getting something done.
I agree.
Any other comments? Phil, any comments?
Well, I guess the concern that I have is that we have, we're having a discussion on one public waterfront, and I have to say, I have to take issue with calling it a beach because it's not a beach, so it's, I wish we would all call it a waterfront, which is actually what it is. But we have another public access point, which the chief reported on, which was Mountain Base, which is residents only. So I think there's some comparisons, some things that need to be looked at that, and it would seem to me that it would behoove us is to at least look at that and see if we can come up with something that perhaps could be town policies, perhaps, that could cover both of them. I mean, if you want to keep this one separate from the other one, I guess we'd have to do that, but I just see that we have some of the things that some people are recommending that this one be already over there where it's residents only. And I mean, as the chief said, that they've had arrests that were alcohol-related, with residents only. The trash is no different there than it is here. I don't know how many people have been to Mountain Base, but I've been to Mountain Base quite a bit, I've fished in Mountain Base. When you walk through the woods, you find diapers, you find beer cans, you find different types of alcohol bottles, you'll find soda cans and bottles all in the woods. Trash piled up the same, so I, I think that that needs to come into the discussion at some point, too.
All right, where do you want to go? Take a, any motion, or? I think we'll even be split on where this, where you want this committee to come from. Let's, let's get it going.
Okay, my recommendation is the Park and Rec Commission, and they can put their members on it, and any other ad hoc interested community members. We give them a timeline to assemble that committee member, and a timeline for a report back to us. All right.
I think I heard something different. I would make a motion that, because I don't believe that was, that you made a recommendation on, on your end, that we contact the past committee who worked on the original Glen Lake, see if there are members who are interested in serving on an ad hoc committee, provide them with the information that we were looking for, and ask them if they would gather that information and report to the Board of Selectmen in two weeks, three weeks?
Are you making a motion?
That was a motion.
I will second the motion.
All right. There's a motion on the table, that's been motioned and seconded, discussion.
Is that gonna include somebody from PD that's gonna be responsible for the enforcement?
Whoever was on that original committee.
Besides the police department, I would like somebody from the park department on that committee, because they're ultimately responsible for doing the oversight of the park maintenance.
Again, my motion was not for them to come back to us with recommendations. My motion was for them to come back with the information, because what I heard was we have information needs, and this board is gonna make the decisions. So the information that you talked about is, would not require the assistance of conservation or...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm gonna step out of my role as chair for a second, but I think we have to make this decision, and I don't necessarily need a recommendation. I can, I'm looking for, give me the, you know, the pros and the cons, you know, we talked about intensity of use, the maintenance, the cost, the citizens, you know, desire for having some sort of priority, and the whole legality of, you know, what do we lose in terms of our liability exposure? You give me the answers to all those things, and I can kind of formulate as to where I think is, you know, we would best represent the citizens of Goffstown. That's why, you know, we're elected to try to make decisions on their behalf and in the best interest of the community overall. And I think if I had the answer to those questions, it may not be a popular decision, not everybody might agree with it, but it's something that I, you know, in my mind, I would, you know, make, make that decision, and that's kind of where I'm at. So I don't really necessarily need, need a recommendation. I do think, however, that if you're going to, if we do not have somebody in the prior committee who is either on the enforcement side or on the maintenance side of it, they should be, that's, that's one of the key components here. So they're, you know, as long as there's a representative on the enforcement side and on the maintenance side of it, so they could at least weigh in on it, I think that would be, that would be important. Now, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, I'm not so sure, going back to what Phil said, whether it's Goffstown residents or all non-resident, I think there's always gonna be a certain degree of maintenance and enforcement, but to the level at which that occurs may be different, if it was, you know, depending on if it was a hybrid or if it was not, so. So we have a motion on the, on the, on the, on the table, and that is to go back, and help me, Catherine, that was to ask those who have served previously to see if they would serve again.
To contact the past committee members and see if they still have an interest, and then provide them with the information and ask that they report back to the board within two to three weeks.
Okay. And if, if it's okay with you, Nick, you know, as long as we have some representation on the enforcement and the maintenance side of it, to try to get us those answers, because I'm not sure those people could, could get that.
But they can go to those agencies and get that information. In other words, for enforcement, they can have, set up a meeting with the police department and get that information, or set up a meeting with Parks and Rec and get that information.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, not to volunteer, Sue, but I think you would probably be a good researcher as far as working with LGC and getting us some information on liability or, you know, policies to cover that liability.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is this two to three weeks for them to report back? And they're gonna put this committee together, and this committee's gonna make appointments with the departments, and have meetings with the departments, and come up with all the enforcement recommendations or decisions, or all these answers? They're gonna do this at this level of intensity and report back to us in two to three weeks?
Yes.
I, I'm concerned about the timeline. If I would understand Selectman Fornier, he would like something along these lines completed before the end of the summer. If, is that really required? Or do we want to make a more measured approach and assure ourselves of all, all the ramifications of various recommendations, and then make a decision, be it in August, that would be effective later in the year? It might be outside the beach here, the waterfront season.
I believe a couple of things are coming up with this. One, when you talk about this, this has been decades. Enough's enough. Enough is enough. And we started at the beginning of the year saying, well, let's go and study it and see what happens. We all knew what was going to happen. It didn't change. There's no reason to continue. We underst, I think we all know what, what needs to be done and what information needs to be done. I don't think it needs to be a drawn-out process, and I agree with Nick. Right now, it's just get some certain facts that we're looking for, as to what, to what transpires regarding, oh, I'll let you go. But what I'm saying, but this does not have to be a long, drawn-out affair. It's not.
Maybe there ought to be a sixth point on the chairman's list, and that is to have the school put a position out, because that's the wild card in the big difference between what it was four years ago, five years ago, and what it is now, is the opportunity to park across the street and increase that usage of the beachfront.
Can I drop in? The more that we add things in, and it doesn't mean that things aren't dynamic and move, but right now, we're gonna deal, to me, we deal initially with the park, okay? And the issue with that is, the more we dilute, and it's like, I don't care if it's a project or if it's within government, the more you dilute, the more you expand out the process, the more it bogs down, it slows down, and nothing becomes accomplished. What you're seeing here now regarding the town is that they're looking for action, they're looking for something to be done after several decades. I'm not gonna dilute it by tying it down with more studies, I don't think we should die, we should slow it down by causing more committees and then springing in other parties, because all that does is makes it difficult to come to consensus. And that's what that process is. This is not that difficult. This is, keep it simple.
Nick, you want to add something?
Yeah, and I was just gonna, when push comes to shove, at the end of the three weeks, the committee may say to us, we need some more time. And that's fine. And I, being realistic, but I would just assume, set a date today versus saying, let's wait two months or three months for a report.
All right. So we have a motion on the table, I'm just gonna throw in my two cents before we vote, and that is, I do think, and I've read all the background material that Collis has provided to us in terms of everything that was done years ago through the grant, all the problems that we've had, everything up here, I think that it's a matter of putting it all, I guess, on a couple of pages of a piece of paper, and just really outlining what are the pros and cons to some different options. Collis talked about the intensity of the use, and then the original plans, which, again, you know, to reinvent the wheel, it's already out there, it wasn't designed to have two or three hundred people on that beach, that's why it only had a certain amount of parking spaces and trailer spaces. Again, that just has to be recapped, and we're good there. In terms of the maintenance and the operation of it, certainly, both the Parks and Rec director and the chief have given us a pretty good idea of what it would cost to maintain patrols and do the cleanup piece, and again, I think a lot of that work has been done. I don't think that a short time period is overly burdensome here, because I think the vast majority of this has been done. And with regards to the school's position, I respect that, but I just think it prolongs it. So I'm, I'm gonna support this motion, so, because I think we have to jump, we have to make, start making some decisions.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have we contacted, has anybody been in contact with the school board to see what, if they're aware of the issues of the parking? I mean, we've gotten the report back from the police chief. He's explained to us, and we have some records of the amount of parking that's there. Perhaps having a discussion with them and letting them know that the issue, because there might be, they might be, have a willingness to work with us towards this, because it seems to me, intensity is, is the main issue. Once you have the increased intensity, you're gonna have increased issues such as trash and alcohol use. It's not an issue whether or not you're a Goffstown resident or not, because on Mountain Base, which is residents only, we have those same issues.
I, so, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, and I, I ultimately think, regardless of which approach we go with, I, I think that we have to address, we have to have communications with the school board, but that, I don't think that that's something that we have to wait necessarily. I think whether it be, it's Goffstown residents only, whether it's a hybrid approach, or whether it's a status quo, we're gonna have to have some conversations with the school board as to the enforcement of parking at that Glen Lake school. But that, you know, to me, I think it has to come from our board first as to which option do we want to go with, and then from there, you know, redefine, because if we're saying that we're okay with hypothetically a hybrid forum where, you know, parking is designated for Goffstown residents only along the shore, and hypothetically, X amount of spots at the Glen Lake school, well, we're still gonna have to go before the school board anyway. So that would be, that's my take. I just, I just wanna...
Well, maybe I didn't make my point, explain my point so much. I guess, to me, intensity of use is what the basic issue was here. If we can reduce that intensity of use, and we might be able to reduce that intensity of use by different ways.
I think that, I think that's one issue. I think, I think it's also, from what I've heard over the last couple of months from community members, is, yeah, it really would be a nice place, but I, I, I'm like intimidated to go there, or it's like there's no way that I would go there, and, you know, that's kind of what I'm hearing. And I, I'm not, I didn't go into it thinking that way, and I think my previous conversations and my votes kind of reflected that, but the citizens that have, that have spoken to me about it feel differently. So, anyway, we have that motion on the table. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
Nay.
Nay, that's a three-two motion passes.
I voted for it.
You voted for it, I'm sorry. It's four-one. Let's give a timetable of three weeks from today. All right?
Ten at a date.
Ten at a date.
They need more time.
Okay.
And my comment for the record, for my vote, was that I wanted more assurance that the committee would be fairly represented by other departments and the school board. And the committee may do that, great, but I wanted it upfront, not trusting them, you know, to do it themselves. I wanted it upfront.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is we have Evelyn Redmond, who is here, and is gonna be talking to us. I apologize, Evelyn, for this slight delay. Slight, it's probably more than slight, half an hour. You're here to talk about some updates to our welfare guidelines.
That's correct.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Part of our welfare...
Part of our welfare guidelines state that we are going to update them, at least review them annually. And actually, we have not done this since 2006. So I've actually been working on these for a while, but most of the changes that you'll see in the document basically are clarifications, realignments of timeframes, some grammatical changes. The only significant changes we have are in section nine, number... item number... item C, number three.
You want to the page number for us?
Unfortunately, I didn't remember these pages. Well, these pages were not numbered when I started.
What's the title of nine, please?
Determination of Eligibility.
Yes.
Okay, I'm there.
Actually, it's, right, it's under item number C, non-financial eligibility factors. And it's number three. Originally, it read, "No person receiving old age assistance or aid to the permanently and totally disabled under RSA 167 or 161 shall at the same time be eligible for general assistance." That has been clarified by the courts. There was a lawsuit involving the city of Franklin and their administration of their general assistance guidelines. And the court decided that if an applicant is receiving what we refer to as APTD, which cash benefits, they've separated to be cash benefits and medical benefits, even though it's not clarified that way in the law. The court separated those two, so we had to just change the wording to be ATP... APTD cash. So that's the only change in that section.
Can we go back, since we're going to maybe go in order?
Sure.
Under letter D, actions and applications. And maybe this is just a grammatic... not a grammatical thing, but under decision, second sentence, it says, unless an application is withdrawn, see, I guess, number four below, the welfare official shall make a decision concerning the applicant's eligibility.
Sorry, can I just... which section are you in?
The one I called you about today.
Oh, okay.
It says immediately.
Which section is that?
Right.
It was D.
Application process.
What number?
That's in item number five. Number five.
Five V is five.
D isn't.
Wrong numeral five.
Delta, delta.
Five delta.
Dunkin' Donuts.
I don't know. I don't do Dunkin'.
Anyway, five A or B?
Yeah, it was immediately.
Five D. Line number two. Where it says immediately...
Yeah.
That is going to be removed.
Okay, that was... okay.
If you want to go by them in order, from five D, the next one is actually nine B. Number two, subset B, which is a clarification of the timeframes. Some of the items in this stated there were five-day waiting periods, seven days, five working days. So the changes that I made there just aligned all those timeframes to say the same thing.
Okay.
So... and then that leads us to item number nine, section C, number three, which I was just explaining to you about the court clarification. Subsection E, in that same section, items number three, four, and six are clarifications. And number five is a change of wording. Number five, where it states, "The change being made is recipients of state aid are generally eligible for reduced phone service or a free cell phone." This is a new program that's available to applicants who are receiving food stamps, cash assistance, TANF, social security benefits, et cetera. There is a program out there that allows them to apply for a free cell phone or reduce telephone rates. So I thought that it was necessary to make sure that that was... that we were following that and making that available to our applicants. When we do make allowance for telephone, the lowest rate at this point for a landline is about fifty dollars a month. And I checked the several different phone distributors around the area and with taxes and fees, because you can get a price of down to maybe thirty-nine dollars, but when you start adding all the federal taxes and the state taxes and fees in, it comes up to about fifty dollars a month. So that's why I wanted to add this information into our guidelines. It does not look like that program is going to be discontinued at any time soon.
You have a question? Question on that pro... is that program just setting the guidelines? Who funds that program?
It's actually a program that's made available by a private phone company. And they're working with the Department of Agriculture and with the federal government to make these programs available to people who are on assistance. So it is not funded through the phone... through any of our phone bills.
But you don't know if it's... you're saying it's private money that does it?
Yes.
It's not taxpayer money?
No, it's not taxpayer money.
Federal or state or local?
My next clarification was in item number F, in the same section. Under number five is just more clarification that income from other sources, not just income per se, but payments made on the applicant's behalf by friends or relatives is going to be considered income when we consider the application for assistance. It's just as though these applicants were receiving an income, somebody is paying their bills for them. A lot of times, we see that with cell phones or with electric bills. And we have to make sure that the applicants are aware of that, that it's just not free money, and we're not going to supplement paying their bills when they're getting funds from someplace else.
I'm going to just... I got to stand in my soapbox for one of these things, and I apologize in advance. Roman numeral ten, non-residence. Eligibility, RSA 165 colon one, it's the top of the page. I know you're not responsible for the law, but I think this board has an impact when we talk, in terms of our conversations with state reps. I mean, that RSA, in my opinion, could place any municipality in harm's way.
That's true.
And...
It's true, and it happens, and we... because of the way the law is written.
Right.
We have no recourse.
Right. And I think we have no recourse, because that's what the state law is right now. And I think as representatives of our community, I think our board should have some discussions as to whether or not we want to either have conversations with LGC or our own representatives about it, because, you know, I've heard similar stories of towns in Maine where all of a sudden, you know, they're faced with that. And it's a huge drain on the local resources, and there has to be some sort of another mechanism. And see, that... this is the very thing that I think the state should be responsible for, not a local municipality.
Well, the state is continuing to shift down expenses.
Right, but this one in...
The towns.
This one in particular, I mean, just, again, I'm sorry, I apologize for being on a soapbox, but this one particularly bothers me.
Well, and it's in all phases of our administration of our general assistance program. They're cutting funding for childcare scholarships that have typically been available to people who are already receiving assistance from the state. The electric assistance has been cut back. So all that trickles down to the towns, and we end up ultimately being responsible for the support. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that I am a member of the Local Welfare Administrators Association, which is a group affiliated with LGC. They do training, and they're also in the process of creating a statewide database so that we all have access to information on applicants for general assistance, which will help to prevent instances of fraud if someone is claiming... And this falls right underneath that, residence. We can't deny people for residence.
The RSA for 165-1, that's the one you referenced, right, Evelyn? Whenever a person in any town is poor and unable to support himself, he shall be relieved and maintained by the overseers of public welfare of such town, whether or not he has a residence there. For the purposes of this chapter, the term residence shall have the same definition in 216A. And when you go to 216A... Let me go there for a minute. I don't want anyone to get the impression that we're assisting people who do not live in our town.
But there is that probability, and you look at places like Manchester, for example, and they have...
You can go after the other town. It's wherever they laid their head the night before, basically.
As long as they continue to have a residence there.
Residence or residency shall mean a person's place of abode or domicile. The place of abode or domicile is that designated by a person as its principal place of physical presence for the indefinite future to the exclusion of all others. Such residence or residency shall not be interrupted or lost by a temporary absence from it if there is an intent to return to such residence or residency as principal place of physical presence. I just don't want the board to get the idea that we are assisting people from out of town.
My point, and I understand that, my point is that I think that the law is vague enough that it opens itself up for some of that. That's all.
Well, it does, and especially the RSA that Sue just read, 165-1. It says at any time they are poor and unable to support themselves. These laws were written...
These are settlement laws going way back.
Right, right. Hundreds of years ago. And the Local Welfare Administration Administrators Association is, right now, actively pursuing changes to these laws to make them more specific so that vagueness is taken away, that it's clarified, because we're all encountering the same types of issues.
And the towns, the abutting towns, work together to define who's going to provide the assistance when someone arrives.
All right, so that basically was just another clarification. The biggest item we have now is in number 11, burials. Up to this point, the town has been allowing five hundred dollars towards a burial for a person who has either been a recipient, currently a recipient of general assistance, or a resident of a nursing home in the locality. I have not had the occasion to grant this kind of assistance to this point, but the state has raised their level of recommendation to a thousand dollars. And I've added that to the document, but that is... this dollar amount level is strictly up to you if you...
I'll have a question. If I read it, it says, "The expense may be recovered from the deceased person's municipality of residence or from a liable relative, if relatives from other... if relatives, other private persons, the state or other sources will not cover the entire burial, the municipality should pay." Okay. In the situation now where we have the county nursing home, and let's just say that there are no relatives, and the person...
Go back to the town. It used to be, you go back to the town before they entered the nursing home.
That's how it goes?
Still that way.
The other opportunity that we have to keep the cost down in that eventuality is that the Crematory Society of the State of New Hampshire does have reduced rates that they work with the local welfare agents. There is nothing in here that states that it has to be a vault burial. So if a cremation burial is the most cost-effective and is done in the proper manner, then that is totally acceptable.
They used to bury them behind the nursing home until it got full. They only have a number on the headstone.
Poppersville?
Until it got full. We used to get charged. We used to get billed for them. Here, the selectmen used to get it when they died in the county nursing home.
Yeah, that was clarified later.
That's right.
All right, so my next change is in item Roman numeral number 12. And that is just another realignment of the timeframes and a clarification under item number six of the length of time. Item number 14 is also another clarification.
A question on the interest rate?
Yes.
Is that something that we determine, or is that something that's determined by statute?
No, that's determined by state law.
And there's no variability in that, so it's just six percent?
And it's only on... It's only levied a year after the original leasemast place.
Okay. That's okay. I'm just... I just had one question, if it was variable or not, it's not...
No. And it's only on the principal. So it does... it's not...
It's a capitalize.
It's crude interest on interest on interest. It's only on the outstanding principal. And there are regulations as to how we can even apply to call that lien. All right, back to number 14. Did that with just a clarification, number 18. We currently have a municipal work program which gives us the opportunity to put general assistance recipients into an open position if it's something they're qualified for and we have an open position.
Ad hoc committees or something?
And they are paid at the going rate. They are covered under the workers' comp insurance. And anything that... any hours that they work is applied to against the amount that they have been granted for assistance. I wanted to make some changes to this item because in the time that I've been doing administering the general assistance program, I found that many of the people that I am working with don't have the skills that they need to establish their own budget or to manage their money. I thought it was prudent to make available to them community service and/or free training programs that we do have available to us. I tried to, and actually had scheduled some budgeting workshops several months ago. And out of the 12 or 14 clients I was seeing at the time, only two signed up for the workshops, and they were subsequently canceled. This wording, I believe, gives us the opportunity to make that requirement of them as long as those training programs are free. And I think that that would benefit the town and it would benefit our clients.
But now you don't really have that... you don't have that ability to do it, because...
She can't make a condition of assistance unless it's in here.
This would allow you to do it.
This would give us some leverage.
Now, that doesn't necessarily have to be an in-person thing. I mean, your training could be... could it be internet... I mean, your training could be, could it be internet-based? Could it be a DVD that they watch?
It's any programs that we have available to us that are free.
Okay.
And they obviously have free access to the internet at the library.
Right.
So, those programs definitely would be part of...
UNH Cooperative Extension used to have quite a series.
UNH still does have a wonderful, have several wonderful programs. And they were the organization that I had arranged to have these workshops. But unfortunately, we had no way to compel the applicants to attend the workshops. And that's what I would like this wording added in for. Also then, in item number E, we're just adding in the wording to perform offered community service opportunities or attend recommended training programs. So, that will just give us a little extra leverage to improve the knowledge base of our...
The only word that I guess I would like maybe changed there is on that, it's the second sentence, "Available bona fide job," and then you're adding, "or community service project" that is within his or her... If we could take the word "project" and replace it with something, because project to me is always like, it's a finite...
A one-time.
It's a one-time deal. And I don't think it's, I don't necessarily think that's the case. Because I think, and the other thing that, yeah, you may have somebody who's qualified to be a lunchroom monitor at a school or something. That's not necessarily a project, that could be ongoing.
Right.
It'd be just community service.
Community service, right.
Or activities.
It's community service.
Just community services.
Because I think when you say "project," that it's like, hey, this thing, I thought it was only going to be, you know, for this one project. And like, no, if it's something, that could be ongoing.
No, we can take that out, that's fine. And that is the last of the changes that I am recommending for that part of the document. The other changes that I am requesting that you authorize is a change in the schedule of the allowances that we utilize when we're making the evaluation as to levels of assistance for different shelter that we will be utilizing for the coming year. As you can see, in 2009, for a studio apartment without utilities, we had an allowance of $650. That, according to my survey of local rental units and the HUD published recommendations, or published schedules of rentals from... They only do it once a year, and I believe it was November of '09, has actually dropped. So, I'm recommending a reduction in that line. Unfortunately, when you get to allocating rent with heat and/or hot water, utility costs have drastically impacted those expenses. And those also, I utilized schedules from HUD that give us fair market rents and also give us utility expenses for the Hillsborough County area. Even though I go up to four-bedroom units, we have very few affordable rental units in the town of Goffstown. But these are not just utilized for rentals. This is also if we have homeowners who come to the town to apply for assistance. We also don't have a lot of people who, whose mortgages are falling into this category, but it is an increase to what we were allocating up to this point.
Evelyn, how do the county rates compare with the greater Manchester area?
The counties... Hillsborough County is actually running higher than the Manchester, central Manchester area.
And these rates reflect what, county?
Which one?
The ones you're recommending?
No, they're the greater Manchester area.
You're using the greater Manchester, okay. I heard county, and I just want to clarify that, alright.
It was the rental, not the rental, but the electric rates for the county, the dollar values for different types of heating availability. They have natural gas, bottled gas, oil, and electric. And they do a whole breakdown of studio to five-bedroom units and what the average costs are per therm. And for a certain number of therms, they do the whole calculation for us. They even include mobile homes. So, what I did was I actually ran a schedule of the different abilities and different heating and added in the electric rates to come up with this schedule.
Motion to accept the revisions presented to us this evening, including the changes we discussed and also the shelter rates.
Seconded by Selectman Devanz, any discussion?
I just have one question. How would that impact your budget this year?
At this point, my budget is actually under expended. We're at 34% of the budgeted amount for the year. If that trend continues, I suspect that we will go over budget this year. Part of that has been that if you, if you... Our guidelines, we don't... When an applicant is in foreclosure or in the process of eviction, it's not our practice to spend the town's money in that manner. We are going to try to relocate them to something that's more affordable. So, we will not be throwing good money after bath.
Because we don't pay in arreos.
Right. And it's, we don't, like Sue said, we don't pay anything over 30 days. And unfortunately for a lot of people, they're waiting until they're in dire straits, till they come to the town for assistance. So, at that point, it's our most economical and most effective way of helping them is to help them get into a unit that they can afford on their income. So, that entails helping them with first month's rent, maybe guaranteeing payment for their electric bill, that type of thing. So, we're not really giving a lot of assistance to people who are in the situation where they're, you know, they're down on their mortgage or they're upside down on their mortgage. Usually by the time they get to that point, we have other options that are more economical and more feasible to keep them in a housing unit that they can afford.
Alright. There's a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Steve, you have one more?
Just a good question. You say our budget, what is the budget amount and how many people are we servicing in this manner?
I have to get those numbers for you, I have them off the top of my head. We have, at this point, probably, I'd say, 10 to 12 family units that we're seeing on a regular basis.
Okay.
And I would guess since the end of April, which is when fuel assistance and the moratorium for fuel, electric shut-offs ends, the end of April, we've probably had between five and 10 new inquiries a week for assistance.
Yeah, what is the budget amount?
For general assistance, the budget this year was $47,000.
Alright. We have a motion on the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much, you did a very nice job on this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Evelyn's doing an excellent job in this position. Very happy with her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my apologies for learning a little late. Alright, Chief, you're back. And now we have a recommendation of bid award for a voter repeater system. We did get that this afternoon, I know it was this afternoon, but I...
In June, we went up to RFP for the voter repeater system, the first phase. Well, anyway, we had two responses back and we reviewed them. There was a lot of information to review. One vendor was Wright Communications and the other was SenCom. SenCom is the Motorola vendor, Wright Communications is the non-Motorsola vendor. After we went up to bid, we learned that the Motorola components were under state bid. I was in contact with the State of New Hampshire Bureau of Purchase and Property at the State House Annex and they referred me to a gentleman in Maine who was looking over that. And once I received the proposal from the Motorola vendor, I sent the parts list, I should say, to them and they concurred that every item on the list was priced exactly at state bid pricing. So, to round up the two, SenCom, which is the Motorola vendor, came in with, at $161,703.63, with the option to add or complete the fifth voter repeater site for an additional $22,635.35 for the grand total of $184,303.98. The other vendor, Wright Communications, the non-Motorsola, both compliant with the, we call P25 system, which is the digital analog system, came in with a final price of $208,864.45. Both of them included the components needed to get the job done. Both included getting the coordination and application for a new frequency which is needed. The only thing that was missing on both of them was the actual installation of a utility pole at one of the sites, proposed sites. And I've been talking with Megan at DPW and she was able to give me a couple ballpark figures on that. Anywhere from $5,000 and as much as $10,000, depending on if you run into ledge. So, with that, I recommend that the award go to SenCom, which is the Motorola vendor, for the total of $184,303.98, which includes that optional fifth site, which I believe we'll probably need. Also, we'll be coming back to the, coming back if we need additional funds for that utility pole and how much that would cost. We'll be working with Public Service on that, on that project.
Questions? I have one. Our budget for this, this is the one we got a grant?
We get a 50% cost grant from emergency management. The total budget was $192,000 and change and emergency management funded half of that, approximately $96,000.
Alright. Nick, you have a question?
Yeah, I remember the conversations last year during CIP and I believe the, at least my feelings at the time were that we appropriate half of that amount because we were, we had put in an application for the other half, but I think we were told that we had to total appropriate. So, I would make the motion that we accept the Fire Chief's recommendation to proceed with the voter repeater, including the telephone poll costs, not to exceed the $192.678 that was appropriated at, for CIP.
Sir, I'll second that. Alright. Are there any, and that represents, just so we're clear on this, this is a two-phase process, correct?
Correct.
And we're hopeful that we can secure another grant next year?
I'm working with Chief Sullivan right now to apply for phase two.
Okay. And again, I think it never hurts to kind of over-communicate, no pun intended. There are a lot of dead spots in Goffstown due to the terrain. And I know when Selectman Devanz and I had a Q and A at the police department, you know, there was a lot of concern about the fact that they are not always in constant radio communication with dispatch. It is a safety issue, not only for our firefighters, but probably more importantly for our police officers who may be on, you know, going to a traffic accident, you know, pulling over someone, a traffic stop, domestic violence issue at a home. And if they don't have active communications with dispatch, it puts, you know, their lives in danger. So, that's why, you know, I know the board, you know, proceeded in that vein. So, again, I don't want to try to, you know, talk too much, but I just want, again, let the community know, this is why we're proceeding in this direction is because we do have a significant number of dead spots in our coverage. Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded on the table. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also go into donations. Again, thank you, Chief, for the donation and please thank Patrick as well, once again.
It's my pleasure.
Alright.
It's a good bid, Phil, what can I do?
Alrighty.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in terms of donations, we also, the town received a $4,500 donation from the Goffstown Industrial Corporation for making our GIS and our Vision appraisal system online. And I think that, that was already accepted in a previous thing, or no, we never did?
We never got it last year because we didn't give the GIS till this year.
We need a motion then to accept it.
To accept both.
Okay, to accept both.
We do them individually?
You can.
Motion to accept the rescue cribbing from the O'Brien family.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. And the next one?
Same motion to accept $4,500 from the Goffstown Industrial Corp. for the GIS and Vision online.
Seconded by Phil. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it could be appropriate for thank you letters to both. Alright. Next will be the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet. The Sioux Commission has canceled the meeting tomorrow night. Consensus folder, the only thing added to this today was the indemnification agreement with the City of Manchester for the use of the 1987 E1 pumper. There were changes by LGC to the indemnification clause and those changes were made and agreed to by the city. So, you have that in your folder. There's also AP warrants, employee status reports, notice of lien, right to inter for Brown at Westland Cemetery and Daniel Leonard at Westland Cemetery.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the consensus folder? Is there a second? Seconded by Selectman Campasano, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before I move on with the right to inter, it reminds me, were we supposed to have a meeting or having the cemetery trustees come in? Were we supposed to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Have they selected, have you selected a date yet for that?
They didn't get back to me with a date yet.
Okay, but we're still working on that?
Yes. And assessing recommends intent of timbercut map three lot 4710.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Campasano, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0.
Any recommends a denial of tax year abatements in map three lot 3718 and map four lot 875.
Any motion?
So moved.
Seconded by?
Seconded.
Selectman Pierce, all those in favor? Aye. 5-0.
Thank you. The town went out to bid for the re-roofing of Town Hall. It was a very detailed RFP. And the contractors, let's see, there are six contractors... and the contractors, let's see, there are six contractors that had submitted bids. And us, I'm sorry, MC Contracting for forty-five thousand, Apple Sard for fifty-three thousand, four hundred, Superior Structures for sixty-five thousand, five hundred, AJ Wood for seventy-five thousand, E-Gimmon Construction for ninety-seven thousand, seventy-three dollars, Impello Construction for ninety-eight thousand, two fifty-four. Dave Roburish called the references for the low bidder and had excellent references. They did the fire stations for the City of Concord, West Side Arena, and Manchester and everyone couldn't say enough good about the low bidder. The specifications were very specific on the type of asphalt roofing that would go on Town Hall. You had approved that RFP when it had gone out, so.
Just from memory, was there a warranty regarding?
Yes.
We had specifications of material, the warranty was for?
Yep, let me check. I think it's a fifty-year asphalt shingle. That's a mini impacture warranty.
The warranty of his work, though.
Yeah, I don't have the RFPs with me and I'm going online to see them.
But that was part of the RFP, though?
It was, yes.
Just couldn't remember, sorry. Nick, you had something?
Yeah, quick question. We had estimated a thirty, thirty-three thousand in CIP with offsetting revenue from Mildred Stark. Is that increase, will that be covered as well?
Yes. GN has been in contact with the trustees, trust finding there are sufficient funds for the clock tower and the roof this year. And they've committed to that and they knew, she contacted them after when we had these bids.
Thank you.
All right. And one last question. Do we, do we know when they may start this?
We have to get the clock tower done first and that's scheduled for August and so September, they'd start the roof.
Okay.
And that would all be in the contract, the time period they need to do it.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of awarding the bid to MC Contracting, they were the low bidder for forty-five thousand dollars, please say aye. Aye. Five zero.
I think you might need to rephrase that. I didn't hear a motion with a second.
I was gonna say, I don't remember a motion or a second.
You entertained a motion, but no one went up to the ocean and seconded.
Anyone, who wants to motion?
Moved right into the vote.
Hey, I'm just trying to make up for the lour.
I just corrected another committee for doing that.
It's all right. Okay, Steve is, who's motioning it?
I thought you had.
I shouldn't really do that, but.
I'll make a motion.
Nick and then Steve, we'll redo it again. All those in favor of the motion to accept the bid for MC Contracting? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Catherine.
Governor and Council will be meeting Wednesday morning at Stonebridge Country Club for their meeting and Selectman Gross, you'll be attending. Did you want to do a brief presentation? I can get you on the agenda if you want.
Yeah, we'll do it. Yeah, what do you want me to present? Glen Lake Beach Fund or something?
Keys to Glen Lake.
All right. PSNH rate increase.
Yeah, this is just to notify you that PSNH sent us a notice of a rate increase effective July first. Rate G, which is most of our usage, increased by five point one two percent and the outdoor lights increased by eleven point four percent. And that, those prices are until the end of the year. And we did close on Barnard Land, so that's complete and now it's time to think about getting a committee together to come up with a design and reuse before any excavation takes place because I think the board had discussed it.
Well, I think that that is a Parks and Rec committee. But I think you're right. I think we have to have a, kind of an end plan before we start talking about the, you know, digging holes there. And I, if I'm wrong, Steve, but hasn't Parks and Rec already had some preliminary discussions on it? Hasn't Rick mentioned some of that or?
They're still formulating their short and long-term goals, but it's part of the process, yeah.
I mean, does it seem to make sense that that would, that would be the right place for it to end up?
Yeah, they'll need to coordinate, obviously, with DPW.
Right. But I'm just saying for them to maybe take the lead on it. Or does anybody else have any other ideas?
Well, I think, though, we need to have also some discussion as to the material that's on there, what the plan is of where we would probably start.
Right.
Any excavation. I mean, not that we're gonna go out there and start excavating tomorrow, because we need a plan.
I think.
But the areas of what we're gonna be needing for the next five years.
Right. I think what, and Sue, correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth, but if we know, if we're gonna work with a, let's say, preliminary design for a recreational, whether it be, you know, trails or a park type thing, and that's the end goal, then I think you have to then, that determines where you're gonna excavate, what materials you might save, because you might need them, you know, like say top soils you might want to save. You know, we talked about maybe using some of the materials to fill in the parry.
Parry.
Is it called?
Yes, the plan should incur the reclamation of the parry.
That needs to incur, you know, to do that and so.
I think, yeah, I think you're right. The end plan will determine, then you have to go back and DPW is gonna have to provide us that input.
What we also need to do, though, is we don't want to have this plan and then find out that where this plan is, the material that we need is where we can't.
We can't get to it because it's not, right, it's, yeah. It's four years away from where we were, I hear you completely. All right, so is there a, it seems to be a consensus that Parks and Rec?
Need to work together.
Right. DPW and Parks and Rec. But I think, I think it makes sense for it to maybe be spearheaded by the Parks and Rec Commission, knowing that they're gonna work hand in hand. I mean, I think DPW always has so much on their plates. They're gonna play an integral part in this, but maybe not be the lead here.
This is a very big project.
I'm talking, I understand that. I'm talking about the end use. The end use, to me, would be more of a, you know, the conceptual piece of it. What do you want it to look like? And then, should DPW be involved heavily? Sure, but I think someone has to drive something. So who do you want to drive this train right now?
Is this purely a Parks and Rec end game?
For all their organizations.
Are we looking at? Right, I think we need to have a plan of ultimately what.
We want this thing to look like.
Well, both parcels.
Right.
And then design our excavation plans around that to determine what we may need to keep, how we fill in the other parcels. So I think we need to have more than just what the Parks and Rec piece may or may not be.
All the private leagues in town, do you want their representation in this or input?
But I think what Nick's saying is still, it's a large track, it's a big project. It's a large track of land. And you're, as Phil stated, you're talking about the resources are there and you're looking, you know, quite a ways down the road. Question is, you know, I think we're very preliminary. What, I think what's the ideal usage of it, it still is out there. I think we understand, we're talking to some Parks and Rec, but you're talking everything.
Well, right.
I mean, I don't know what the, we're gonna look at all the possibilities.
Let's just say for the sake of argument.
Look for possibilities.
DPW says, you know what, maybe our building is better served being on the parry property and that opens up their land for, you know, another municipal building. We want to have all of those thoughts in place, so the final plan accounts for any of those possibilities.
Right, and I think that's a good point because when we had put this on the ballot the first time around, we did have, you know, kind of a conceptual of what it would look like and I think now it's not so much, it still would be conceptual, but we do have to figure out, do we want to carve out something for future, you know, municipal building that you may not think you need now, but in twenty years you might? And then build, you know, fields around. I mean, I think those are the important things because one of the things that we don't want to do as a community is to then build something then to move it, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of long-range strategizing with this piece of land.
But somebody has to take the lead. And I guess that's what I'm saying is I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem with.
I'll make a suggestion. Right now, as you mentioned, I mean, DPW's got their hands full. They've got a full plate right now. I mean, this is not something that we have to do immediately. Maybe the, maybe the thing would be is have Steve, you know, bring up at the next Parks and Rec Commission. I mean, they meet once a month, anyway. Have that, you know, have them discuss that while, see where they're coming from on that. And in the meantime, by the time, well, because we're looking at July, then August, September, October, you know, later on in the year, right at, towards the tail end of budget season, that might be a good time for Parks and Rec perhaps to get together with them.
Yeah. I, I think, I think Sue, you made a good point. I think that there are, if we can get other stakeholders in the community involved in the process, I think that the ultimate development of that parcel, five, ten years down the road, could be funded, you know, by a lot of private contributions of, you know, in kind. There's a lot of community groups that need, you know, recreational space that would have no problem developing that site and putting their sweat equity into it, you know, whether it be, you know, groups like baseball or lacrosse or football. There's a whole host of, you know, of groups that would be willing to be part of that. But just somebody has to take the lead, that's all I'm saying. To come up with some ideas and concepts. And then the other thing that we have to, can't lose sight of is that, you know, we bought this property, you know, to get some materials, to get materials out of it and the longer we wait, the less we're not getting our return on that investment. So I think we have to kind of, we can't be too slow in doing it.
Yeah, design work is always easier in the winter when things slow down for the engineering group.
But so maybe right now, we start talking about different concepts, get, you know, get the stakeholders together and then when it's slower on the DPW side is when we go really meat and potatoes on.
Yeah, but I think, though, before we get to that part of it, I think the point that Nick made is crucial. I think we need to get together with our departments to look at the big plan of now the total parcel that's there.
Yeah.
Okay?
All three parcels, right?
Yeah, what I meant, the total package now. Because as you meant, as Nick mentioned, there's, you know, we have a police shooting range down there. We have all these different things. So we need to see as far as the municipal, for the municipal purposes of what we have down there. And let's get that kind of looked at first and then I think that step should come after that. And that timing might be good sometime, you know, it's slowed down in the wintertime. That stuff can get done and then, then bring that portion into it.
Yeah, because obviously, you know, DPW is there, the police have a shooting range.
There's a range.
Parks and Recreation needs.
There's a reclamation of the parry property that we have to do. And what's the parry properties, is that something that might be suitable?
Yeah, we talked about a central fire station and that may not occur for ten or fifteen years, but it would be nice to have the site available and ready.
Exactly.
For that time in the future.
Proper location, where the entrances could be. Let's have DPW and we look at that as a total parcel.
You know, and again, I don't think that this parcel is suitable for a cemetery, but I think we need to start thinking about that as well because.
I don't know what, I don't know what, how much future Hillside has.
Right, when the cemetery trustees, that's one of the questions I want to ask them is, you know, what is our, you know, what is our current capacity? It's the town's obligation to provide cemeteries per RSA. We have to start, you know, we've been pretty fortunate that we have, we've been able to fill all those needs, but we need to be thinking twenty years out, thirty years out. Is there another parcel of land? Is this parcel su, I don't know.
The expansion, CIP, they gave us a presentation. That should be about a twenty-year capacity.
Right now, yeah. Right, but is it our charge now to be looking twenty? I think that it is for those types of things, depending upon the parcel.
Just a question on that. Do you recall that they have anything about the capacity at Hillside? What's left? I haven't heard of it.
I haven't heard that. I knew that the new, the new portion of where the cemetery field is right now had a, they have about a twenty-year capacity.
You're referring to?
Hillside.
Hillside.
Which is brassmere.
Brassmere.
They didn't give us the capacity. The desire was not to expand there because of the uneven terrain. I guess it's difficult.
Okay, but that's over that area, but if there's something.
And I don't, I didn't get that information. We didn't really discuss that. It was more of the cemetery.
All right. So we have that. Is there anything else? So we'll go to, move forward. Any new business?
Your letter?
Oh, our letter, our draft letter. We had, Sue drafted this up after a conversation about, I think it was our last meeting, about trying to give a little bit of guidance and direction to department heads and our committee chairman. And it was really more in tune with the land purchase piece. But Sue's thought, which I concurred with, was that we talked about these other bullets as well and in terms of, you know, what are some ways in which revenues, you know, whether it be grants for CIP, any impact fee offsets that could be used? Are there any services that should be more geared towards fee-based? We talked about that we would not support any land purchases in 2011 unless those funds were other than property tax dollars that were available. We talked about that we would not consider supporting any new programs or services unless they are self-sustaining and we urged our department heads to examine current levels of participation in programs and their effectiveness and consider discontinuing those which score low. We talked about staffing, that we would not support any expansion of staff hours or new staff positions and look for opportunities to consolidate positions when possible. Freezing CIP at the same level as 2010 and again, knowing that that might be a challenging task, but, and if we need to revisit that, we will, but something that we need to at least push for. Continue with regionalization and cooperative agreements when it's possible and I think we should, you know, endeavor in that regard. And then lastly was creativity. What are some different ways in which we can still provide our levels of service, but doing it at the same tax rate? Now, I think all those are really the, you know, the key points that we wanted to let our department heads and our committee chairman know so that no one gets blindsided when we go through the budget process and I think it'll also expedite it. Does everybody feel comfortable with the, with this letter in terms of the direction that it provides? I mean, it might need a little tweak here and there, maybe, but is everybody okay with the substance of it?
Yes and no. And it's really not the letter, but there are a couple of things. I would like to see the department heads develop alternative budgets, trying to provide us with a level-funded budget, five percent reduction and a ten percent reduction so we can see what those numbers look like and we have actual spreadsheets to see the impact of those and have the department heads give us the scenarios, the various scenarios. My other thought is where, I would like to personally see the budget presentations moved up earlier to give us more time to work on developing the budget.
What's your question? Can we do it earlier, is that what you're?
Can we do it earlier?
Statutorily, you mean, or just?
Because we don't have a lot of numbers in by that time. That's the problem.
Well, we don't, you're absolutely, we don't have the health insurance. But a lot of, ninety percent of the budget a department head can do and what they present to us usually is not dependent on those numbers that we're waiting for. That's typically our side.
Yeah, well, if I can just say, I think, I think there's two different issues. I think this is, this is one issue here and that issue with departments. We're gonna have to meet with the department heads on that because we're gonna have to have a discussion with that because if I, if I'm sitting down with the chief and I have a discussion with the chief and say the Board of Selectmen wants to see you do a budget five percent reduction, okay? Well, his budget consists of communications, okay? Police operations, okay? And the first question that he's gonna come up to me, he says, okay, Phil, what do you want me to do? What do you want me to cut in communications? Five percent reduction. Okay? So we have to have that discussion because the question is gonna be is, okay, if I reduce positions, I'm only doing, let's say just for example, if I reduce two positions, I'm gonna reduce two positions, but I haven't even, I've only gotten to two percent reduction, where, where would you like me to take the other three percent? And what we're saying to him is I want you to do it. Well, as a department head, I don't have any clue where the Board of Selectmen wants me to go with this kind of a cut because it's not a kind of a cut, it's, I mean, so I think that it's two different issues. This is, this is one issue and I think that's another issue that if we're gonna do that, we need to have a discussion. This is, this is one issue and I think that's another issue that if we're going to do that, we need to have a discussion with the.
If I, I'm just going to jump in for a second. I think that the letter or the memo itself conveys the message to department heads and the committee chairman that it's really not business as usual and how we've done things in the past. And that, you know, you know, perhaps we need to maybe tweak the first paragraph to incorporate in, the budget committee gave us a charge of a 10%, you know, reduction off, off this. And in, in trying to endeavor to, to, to look at, at these things and, and what some of the options that we have in front of us, here are some things that we know that we're going to have to contend with, revenue, land purchases, pro, I mean.
But the date is here for the, you know, and that's why I mentioned about starting the budget process earlier.
I, I personally, I think that by getting, if I'm a department head and I'm getting this from the Board of Selectmen, I'm, I'm starting to think of my budget like right now, what, what am I going to? So I'm automatically, you know, you know, kind of, kind of doing that. But I, I think it certainly, you know, we have been, we have been charged by, requested by the Budget Committee to take a look at having a budget that's 10% less than our current year's budget. And what might that look, look like? So I, I under.
Well, I guess when is, when do we have to give the budget to the Budget Committee?
This was going to, this was a date.
October 23rd was when.
It's an all-day Saturday. This is what they have marked in the calendars to have the department heads present all on one day, the full budget.
And when do we provide the Budget Committee with their budget? When do we give it to them?
Is that the process you're using? I didn't hear the definite process yet.
This, this is just a presentation.
That's a presentation and typically we delivered that, that to them. If I'm not mistaken, usually by like the second, first, second week of November.
Before their November regular meeting.
Right.
The third Tuesday. They usually get it by the second Tuesday in November.
Which is the ninth.
Okay, now.
So we're going to meet twice, three times and.
Not necessarily, not, not, see, I, I disagree with that. Because I, I think that individually, or even as a group, I think we're going to be with our department heads to try to what, because ultimately, if I'm, if I'm Carl and you're saying to me, you want, you, and you want to look at 0, 5% reduction, 10% reduction, I think Carl has to have discussions with this board, where do you want me to go with this? Do you want, is this personnel-driven? Is this equipment-driven? Is this road plan-driven? Where, is it all three? Where do you want me to go? Because I can accomplish it, but.
I, I don't know, I, I mean, I, I have experience in, on a municipal department being told, your budget will be this. We want you to show us these budgets, reduce services as limited as possible. And it's my job and my fire chief's job to come up with the scenarios. We don't run back to the mayor and say, well, do you want us to do this or do you want us to cut? I mean, that's what they pay us for.
It's a different form of government though, it, it really is.
Well, budgeting is budgeting and, and who knows the department best, but be creative. We want you to show us scenarios and, and the 10% reduction may be totally ridiculous. But we have the numbers and we have justification why that won't work. But it's, it's, it's the department head's job to lay out that. You know, if I have, on the fire department, if I have to go without hose next year, that's a number I may use and say, you know, well, this, these are the pros and cons. I can come to your 2% reduction, but this is what we have to do. We can't cut personnel because we're under safer grants and these are all the other cuts we'd have to make. Then it comes to us to start making those decisions as to whether that's a service cut we're ready to live with.
I agree with the letter and it's the first step. The second step is the potential for what we would like to have for a reduction. And there's not enough time between October 23rd where we receive a presentation and the second Tuesday of the next month where we turn a budget over to the committee. For us to be clear among ourselves what the components of that budget is and where potential reductions could be, there's not enough time there. So one solution is, this letter has to lay it out front. It has to have that Part Two component as the next paragraph about potential reductions. And my closing point is, you mentioned that we've been charged by the Budget Committee. The minutes of the Budget Committee says we're going to receive a letter with clarifications. Has such a letter been received?
No.
When is their next meeting?
They're taking, they're taking the summer off.
Yes.
September.
That's the problem.
Was it, seems that their communication might have been.
No, I was, Dan said that he would send a, Dan said that he would send a, a letter to, to, to me.
To both boards.
Right, yeah.
Can you, can, what is the summer off? I mean, what is, I mean, are we talking liberty? I'm not quite sure, then they meet, they meet the third week of September, what are, do we have an idea?
They are not meeting in July and August, they will meet again in September.
Okay, like beginning, the end?
It seems.
As far as I know, it's going to be their regular meeting.
If they're not, if they're not very serious on what this, their guidance is, they're, they've taken the summer off.
And that was my point the last time we discussed this, is that we could be going through lots of steps and we don't know how the process is going. And I think it's, I think at this point, I think we do need Dan to come in and discuss where they are as committees, how is, how are they going forward with this? Last year, we know how it went and I don't see any reason of, like as Mr. Pierce is saying, oh, suddenly they take the summer off. Unless they say their meeting's in the third week of September, I have no idea. And we're all sitting around here in early October, this does not make any sense. I think we need to have a member of the, I would, I would say Dan.
Maybe, maybe the right thing is to get, have Dan, if we can invite Dan to our, our meeting, next meeting or two.
Next meeting, I would.
Clarify.
Yeah, because I think we need some clarification, what, 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 what is transparent? Because I don't have a good idea or feel for it. What I'm gathering from Budget Committee at this point is that, hey, we're looking for 10% to you in October. I'm just kind of gathering that here.
But then we're supposed to receive a letter with clear guidance, that that was their intention?
Well, it's, it's reflected in the minute, so it's not like it wasn't said, but.
Yeah, but so I'm, I'm, I'm with Mr. Pierce here.
The minutes, they rambled a long time to reach that motion. And so I, I would like to see the clear guidance in a letter.
But I mean, there has to be some recognition that you have department heads who are going to be putting time, effort. And it, you know, I hate, I hate seeing resources wasted if we're just going to start talking.
And that's another thing we have to, you know, we have to keep in mind too, is that, you know, there's a, there's a dollar component, administrative dollar component to coming up with all of these budgets, Nick. And I think, you know, one thing that I know, I, I harp on at work is everything, every report that I have to do is time. And if it's not going to get read, or if it, or if it gets shelved, or if it doesn't, if at the end of the day, I spent 40 man-hours on something and it had no impact, well, that, those, those were dollars wasted for my organization. And I, and I want to be very cognizant of the fact that before we have our department heads doing a lot of legwork. And the other thing too is, what the Budget Committee does not do, but what we have to do and our department's heads have to do is we have to manage the employees of this community, whether we like it or we don't. Our department heads do the managing, but we set the stage for that. And, you know, as a manager of people, we can have all these discussions, but it affects the, their productivity, it affects their morale. And if we're going down any types of paths, they have to be communicated. Because we made that mistake last year and I'm not, I do not want to make that mistake again this year. And if that means that something like this is something that goes to every town employee, then so be it. So that they know what the situation is. And again, you know, maybe that's something that, that we have to do a better job of communicating to all of our employees, this. Maybe this should, this is something that has to be copied to all of our employees to let them know what, what we're faced with.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Since the date seems to be an issue, maybe we can leave that portion out? As, as far as the specific date for the budget presentation?
The reason we're setting the date is so everyone will reserve that date early and let's say, oh, I didn't know about it.
Because what we've had in the past.
Say it anyway though.
Right, but I mean, we, we had that issue though, was, was the timeframe between October 23rd and, and the ninth.
Yeah, that leaves three Mondays for deliberation.
Why can't we do two, why can't we have our own presentations and then have the joint one on the 23rd?
Could do that.
That's what I was leaning towards, was, was just, why don't we start, we can start earlier and then the joint one will be after we've already kind of done most of our deal, you know what I'm saying?
I, I guess that kind of goes what, what we were saying. Because when you said about, let's say 5% reduction into the four minutes, we could have that discussion with department heads prior to that.
Right.
I, I just, like I say, I, I know I've said this enough times. I just don't want to be sitting here like we did last year. And at the end, the Budget Committee, even though we had all these department heads, and I'm not saying they should have accepted the budget or not, but the reality was when it came down to the end was, here's the number, let's take a percentage off and that was it. There was no rhyme or reason or no vision to what, or what picture that was supposed to look like. It, it's silly to wait to the end to do that if that's going to be the end result. Let's, let's, let's have this conversation upfront.
I, I mean, but here's the difference.
I don't want to go down that road of, like we did last year.
But here's the, here's my problem with, if you read, if you read the minutes. My concern, and I, and I shared it at the meeting, was, you know, they, I think, it, it was a little bit of a ramble. Okay, and it was disjointed. And at the end, it was, oh, okay, you know what, I kind of agree with that, 10%. But there was discussions about a level tax rate, there was discussions about 5%. There was discussions 10.
Other articles.
Right, other, there was a lot of different discussions. I think our board has to take the position of, you know, what are we looking? You know, what do, you know, we can take a look at, at what a 10% could look like. And maybe that's what we should do as a preliminary start, to see if it's, if it's possible and what, what impact it would have. But at the end of the day, we're going to have to say, yeah, we endorse this 10% and this is where it's going to go. Or no, we don't endorse it. And I don't know, I just, but the only way we're going to get to that point is to see what impact it will have.
Did it make a difference what budget we produced last year to the Budget Committee? And not that we produced it, but it came from the department. Did it make a difference what any of those lines were last year? No, it did not.
No, no.
No, it did not. I don't, like I say.
So because it was a number at the end of the day.
It was a number at the end of the day, it was a number at the end of the day. And if that's to where it's going.
What's the number?
What, why, why are we doing, you know, I mean, the, the process is wrong. We need clarification from the, from the Budget Committee, what, what their intent is.
Just put a number out there and don't justify it.
That's what happened last year.
Subcomponents.
That's what happened last year.
And if I could, and I understand your frustration, we all went, we all went through it. But I, I think the Budget Committee is an elected board that's going to do, they gave us some guidance. They're going to do what they're going to do. I don't think that relieves us of our responsibility to put together a budget.
What I'm trying to say though is that the budget in the end is the charge of the Budget Committee. That's their charge, that's their duty, that's what they signed on for. To sit back, have a number and just say, well, hey, I don't like that and change it is not producing a budget. By any stretch of the imagination.
Okay, I'll, I'll take you first and then.
That's going to occur and we can't solve that problem. But we need to justify the components ourself and we need to have that discussion at this board with our department heads. And, and it, I like the recommendation is to have all that discussion ahead of time. So when we come into that presentation, we're 95% there.
But it affects.
And then, and then we have three weeks to finalize it.
What I'm trying to get at though, it affects the direction we should be taking now. In other words, if we, you know, if we understand that there's going to be a, if the process is going to be that way or if they're going to go back to a process where we look at, shall we say, at least totals, I mean, you know, subtotals and understand some of the workings of it, then it's a different conversation.
Yes, hold on.
No, I, I, I understand perfectly because I think we all have that frustration. I mean, I have that frustration with the amount of work that goes into presenting a budget and how you come up with that budget line by line. Okay, we know how that number, we know that this number on the bottom includes all these little things and where it includes. And to just say, well, take that 10% or take that percentage off, to us, after going through this, has a certain bit of irresponsibleness. Okay? But that does not relieve us of our duty to put the responsible budget together. There's two parts to putting a budget together. Number one, you have to make sure that it's not excessive. And number two, you have to make sure that it's adequate. And the frustration is, is when everybody's worked together to come up with a budget, you know, all of a sudden arbitrarily take a percentage off the bottom line. That just seems to be counterproductive.
Depends what your goal is. It depends what the goal is. And if your goal is to, let's say hypothetically, the goal is to assist taxpayers. Taxpayers have, you know, cannot, they're, they're, we have reached their, their limits of the ability to pay, et cetera. If that is the goal, then, then that's the goal. If the tax rate to main, you know, we want it, so there's, there's no increase or we want to see a slight decrease in the tax rate. Or if that's what the goal is, then that's, then that's, that's the, that's the number that you're shooting for. That's all I want to know.
That's my point.
That's all I want to know.
That's my point, then we, then you work back.
Then I'll work back.
Then you work back, but that's my point here. Why produce all this, produce everything and then have to re-figure out everything within a short span of time? It doesn't make sense.
I mean, if you're, if you're, you know, and I think this is not, I mean, we are rein, we are reinventing the wheel big time here. I mean, if, if our goal as a, the Budget Committee's goal, or their directive, was a 10% reduction in the budget, this current year's budget. Now, what that accomplishes is that would, I, I don't even know what that translates into in terms of decrease in the tax rate. I don't, I'd have to do that analysis, but. I have to take a look at that and say, okay, that's a decrease in the tax rate, people paying less. But in terms of them paying less, there's the trade-off for that. Yeah, you will pay X amount less in your tax bill, but the trade-off is, is that we may not be able to do X, Y, and Z road. We may not be able to provide X amount of fire or police protection, library services, Parks and Rec services, you name it. Town hall services in order to accomplish that. So what do you want? And ultimately, it's, it's the citizens who decide what they want.
I understand, but I guess, I mean, Nick, Nick has a point of an exercise that perhaps we need to go through with our department heads. Okay? I mean, I know that when I sit down with the police chief or the fire chief, those two departments are, are labor and equipment. Okay, they provide life safety services, emergency services. I'm either going, I have two basic line, two, two subcat, subtotals that make up that budget. One is labor.
Right.
And one is equipment.
Right, and in the area, say the police department, your equipment is cruisers for the most part, is vehicles. That's the biggest one. But it's, that's, yeah, and then the other, but the big nut is the personnel side, right?
Right, okay. So if I'm going to look at taking, let's say, 5% reduced my budget, I'm going to be looking at what my expenses are, whether it's, I'm supposed to be replacing an air conditioner that was supposed to be replaced perhaps two years ago, am I going to put that off again? I mean, you come down to certain things, okay? Now, what, what do you, what do you, what do you put off? If you reduce, let's say you eliminate two positions. Okay, so by eliminating two positions, I've only reduced it, let's say, maybe 1%. Where do I come up with the other 4%?
But still, going through the exercise is what we have to do.
Exactly.
I'm convinced of that now. If I say one thing, if and when we do this, and if the board wants to go in that direction, we have to go with some assumptions. Let's, can we, can we agree that we'll take the average of the last five years for health and dental and all that other fun stuff? Because we don't, sometimes it goes up and sometimes it goes down.
I'll take the average, take the average increase maybe.
The average increase, that's what I'm saying.
Right, we want to increase.
You didn't say increase, you said the average, that's all.
Yeah, but I think that's what he meant.
I meant that. So if the average increase has been, over the last five years has been a 15% increase, then let's do that. I mean, I don't think it would be fair to go with the, the worst, but it would be fair to go with the least, you know, increase. But, so we need to know that. And then again, if there are any revenue decreases in terms of shared revenues, we have to include that in as well. Because this is what I tried to harp on with the Budget Committee to a degree, is that, yes, you're asking for a 10% decrease from the current year's budget. But when you factor in that we're going to have increases in healthcare, in, in our benefits, et cetera, or contributions to pensions, that, that means that you're going to have to now look for potentially 13, 14%.
You're higher.
Okay, I'm just saying.
She was just, oh, electricity's going on.
Right, no, but, but that's my, my point is that. Right, no, but, but that's my, my point is that even to maintain, to maintain the status quo, it would, it would have gone up X percentage. So now, you, it's, you have to go the other route, so really, we're looking at, when you, when you give direction to a department and you say, okay, it's not ten percent, you got to factor in X, Y, and Z, so in essence, you're, you're looking at a thirteen, fourteen percent. Cut. Do you follow where I'm going?
Absolutely. We seem to all agree with each other. But we're not, yeah, we're not coming to a conclusion. And I, my last point here is I'm going to take Sleckman Devanz's case one step further. We won't have definite knowledge of budget till March. And should we have to implement some reduction in staff, that doesn't happen overnight, it would perhaps take a couple of months, year's half over. And so, you know, the money that we thought we might save with staff reduction doesn't materialize that quickly, the year's half over.
We need to, I like the letter, maybe we need to say something about the department presentations being resolved at this level.
Yeah, but I think that's different, because this is to the departments and committees.
Good.
Right.
This, this, this presentation could simply be the bottom line figure from each department without any hour-long briefing.
I think, Sue, you've kind of captured what everyone's, I mean, I think we're all on the same page, we're going to start, we as the board are going to do this earlier than, than October.
Yep.
Okay, and so we, so I'm going to have to capture that. I personally have a couple of little, little word changes, and I noticed that you had the same exact word change on yours.
We don't, we don't struggle.
So anyway, is everybody okay with pretty much the bullet points and we can, we can kind of send them?
So this date, this date will reflect the formal presentation between both boards.
But we're going to do it before.
We can talk with the department and set our dates.
We just want to make sure everybody's there on that date.
All right. And Sue, I'll get with you tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll.
While, while we're on this.
Yeah.
Just on the budget issues, you know, because again, it is, like Pierce just mentioned, the year keeps going and we're getting closer and closer to the end. One of the things that we were looking at, and we had talked earlier, we try to hold positions open when we can to save some money. We have had some items that come in, CIP items that have come in under.
Budget.
Under budget. In an effort to preserve those savings, I would ask this board to agree to send a directive to the department heads that salary lines and CIP lines should not be, are not to be used to, because we're in a bottom line budget, are not to, that, those monies are not to be used to make up shortfalls in other lines.
And we shouldn't commingle them.
So now especially what you're saying is no transfers between, unless approved by the board or something?
Well, between their operating budget is okay, but not the.
Not a capital expense.
Not the salary-related lines, salaries, budget, excuse me, benefits. And because it doesn't make any sense for us to try to save money by holding a position open for so many months.
And then it gets spent somewhere.
And then it gets spent because another one got overspent.
All right, anything else? In the old business?
We just get some clarification on that, is that a yes?
Oh, yes.
In the form of a motion?
I think we should just put it in the form of a motion.
All right, so I'll make that motion. Restrict the use of salary line items and CIP.
I'll second.
To just their purpose.
Any deviations wouldn't come before this board.
Would come.
All right, and seconded by Sleckman Devanz, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Old business.
Old.
Oh, I have one item on new business.
No.
Just, it's real quick and it just, just so the board's aware, maybe we can, just, I don't know if you need any action from the board, but I talked to Sue about it. We had some issue on Prospect Street regarding parking. As you know, Prospect, Prospect Street is a very narrow street.
Is that one by the funeral home?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And many times, the residents in an effort to try to keep, because people are parking on both sides, to keep a lane, an access lane, they encroach on the sidewalk, and there are residents now getting parking tickets for parking on the sidewalk, as well as there are residents that can't get out of their driveway, sometimes when there are services at the funeral home. Sue had investigated on my request the, the ordinance, and there is an ordinance prohibiting parking on the east side of Prospect Street.
So there's no signs there?
The signs over the years have been taken down. So my request is that Public Works install several signs according to the ordinance, and then they'd be enforced, particularly at the time.
When was the?
Eighty-nine, I think was the.
Yeah, seventy-nine, then it was revised in eighty-nine.
And the signs, the ordinance called for signs?
Oh, yeah, any no parking ordinance.
Right, you can't enforce it if there's no signs.
But they have disappeared.
Okay. Hypothetically, there's a funeral or whatever, a wake going on, what impact is there? It's just, you can't park there, that's it.
Right, and I, and I thought about that, but I, I've been to many establishments where they have a sign on the door that say, you know, if you've parked in this parking lot, move your car, you're going to get towed, or you're going to get a ticket. And I think it, it just puts the onus on the funeral home to make sure that there are people coming into their services and not parking, because it's not fair to those residents when they can't get out of their driveways, or they're getting tickets in an effort to keep a space for an ambulance to get through or a fire truck to get through.
I agree, I agree. Re-install the signs that have mysteriously disappeared.
They hang out in Phil's garage.
I don't have a garage.
Oh, okay.
They're along, they're, they've been installed along East Dunbar and Road.
Uh, that was it, that's all. I guess my, I guess my struggle is the black and whiteness of this one, because I think when there is a, you know, a wake or something going on, I'd hate for someone, you know, people do that, it's for two hours and that's it, you know, and just, I don't know, just.
Are you proposing to change the ordinance tonight?
What? No, but I'm not going to, I, I just, I'm.
Our charge is to enforce the ordinance.
It's a public safety issue. I mean, there's plenty of parking on Mass Road, and it may be an inconvenience.
I want the fire truck to get through this street.
St. Lawrence Church, there's, there's plenty of parking around, it's not as convenient as parking directly across from the.
No, and I understand that, and I'm also trying to, you know, this board has also talked about being, trying to be friendly to businesses, and that is a business, a longstanding business in the community, and, you know, it serves a, I don't know, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just struggling with it, that's all, I, I.
I, I understand.
Saying I disagree, and I know what our job is, but I just.
I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, from what I'm hearing here, okay, is that this ordinance is nineteen eighty-nine?
It started in seventy-nine.
French and Rising has been an establishment long before nineteen eighty-nine, so this ordinance, I'm assuming, had a public hearing, at least one back then.
And one in seventy-nine.
O, o, okay, so, I mean, unless there's something else that happened at some point that changed that ordinance.
No, I had the chief check after I researched it, and he said, no, that's the most current eighty-nine.
I mean, I, I don't know how.
All right.
I, I, I understand, I, I, I just don't know how it got to the point that it is now.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Is the consensus of the board just to proceed, right? That's what I'm gathering, okay. Yeah.
Install the signs.
I would like to see, I'd like to see the minutes of that, that meeting if we could find them.
Eighty-nine?
Yeah, eighty-nine, is that that far ago?
You were probably in office at the time.
Got nothing else to do.
In the archives.
It'll cost five hundred bucks to get those minutes, just forget it. Any other, we have old business by Sleckman Pierce.
Yes. They have to be available, nineteen eighty-nine.
They are available, they are available, we can get them, they're not online.
I'm not curious.
I'd like to see what the, if there was public, any input from the public, if it was a concern.
Okay, and it was.
Now what?
Now what? No, I'm just curious.
I would like to see what the public comments were.
French and Rising, they need, they need parking, and it's, we're paying our respects to people and we live in, I mean, I'm just saying, let's just, let's just say that there were, there was.
I would just like to see it.
It'll cost you.
But could we not, could we not delay the reinstallation of the signs for that?
And deduct it from.
Because the ordinance is in effect.
Oh, no, I'm not saying not to do it.
I appreciate that.
But I would like to see the minutes.
If you knew that it was going to cost a hundred bucks to get those minutes, you'd still want to do it?
That's right, because I think, I think, I think citizens of the town have, have that.
Catherine, I'd like to make a motion to deduct one hundred dollars from.
I think I could give him a bold buy. I think if we look at the date of the ordinance, we could like start there and just stand out a little bit and see.
Catherine's working overtime now.
We go, now it's an overtime rate, oh.
We have that next Monday.
May I get to old business?
Old business.
Thank you. On the twenty-eighth of June, this board started to discuss the Transportation TE grant that will be notified about later this fall for the rail trail project. And the, the results of that conversation is that we wanted DPW to seek guidance from Department of Transportation as to what they will allow or mandate in the construction of crosswalks. Well, that note has, has been sent to Department of Transportation asking those questions, and we're now waiting on a response back. I just want to bring you up to date that that was accomplished. And my last item, old business, earlier this year, you accepted or re-accepted a two thousand nine grant from the Trails Barrel for installation of a culvert downstream of the Mass Road.
Greenage, yeah.
Green Greenwich downstream from there. And that, technically, that money expired at the end of June. And we have now correspondence that the governor and the executive council approved extending that money for one year. There's no further action required for this board, I just want to let you know that the money's been extended by the governor.
Question?
Yeah.
Is that the culvert that we had an issue with in a butter who?
Yes, that's the one. And then, once that was solved, we had an issue with another butter who, concerning an easement. And that lack of an easement forced us to redesign the wing walls on the culvert. And that redesign had to go back through DES.
And wasn't there like a graduation party or something that was?
Then, once we had the design and the, once we had DES happy and the design happy, we found out it was too expensive. We went through a different type of culvert, which is now under review again. Expedited review, I hope. But all that required us to formally ask a one-year extension of the money, and that was done.
Okay.
No further action required.
Under committee reports?
Old business.
Moving, no, there is no more old business.
Yes, I have old business. Did we get a reply back from Manchester regarding the trestle?
No.
It's been two weeks or three weeks?
Probably three.
And being we didn't get a reply last time you sent this letter, how are we going to proceed as a board?
Where'd it go to the first time?
Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Mayor and Board of Alderman, it's not coming out.
They discussed it, Nick said, they, it was in the minutes that they discussed it.
And?
No, not the recent.
No, the first one.
The first one.
Resend it again, second request.
Registered mail.
Yeah.
How many requests will we be sending before we go elsewhere with requests for?
No, I think you got it, I think now you send it certified.
You want to go deliver it to a council meeting, public comment?
Do you want me to just call?
Yes, yes.
If they're going to address it or not.
Call one of your counterparts.
Dear Ted.
It's just a common courtesy piece, either going to address it or not, I, it doesn't matter.
Are you done?
Maybe.
Okay. Uh, committee, committee reports, we'll do CIP first. Your meeting tomorrow? No, Thursday.
Thursday, and last, last time we met, we had a presentation from the cemetery trustees, they went over the plan. We had questions on trying to break it up into phases, and we're working on that. Administration came in, Jan came in to give us some background information on the rail trail CIP, land use software, the HVAC replacement units, financial software, and the GIS flyover. Parks and Rec came in regarding the Roy Pool, the biggest item that they're really in dire need of is repair, the resurfacing of both Barnard and Roy Park Pools, because they're, they're flaking, they're actually a safety issue now. And they're losing
Two or three inches.
Three inches of water per day at Roy.
That means they go on and turn that water on, and it runs for five hours a, or, once a day, it's a lot of water.
Yeah, he, yeah, has someone coming in to take a look at that.
It's a lot of water.
Our concern is where's it going?
BP has this cap that now that you can borrow, you can, you can put it right down on it.
And the police department came in regarding their CIP, the, the annual vehicle replacements, the communications upgrade, their IMC computer dispatch records, maintenance software. So this coming Thursday, we'll start with any potential callbacks and start deliberations.
All right. HDC? Anything there?
No, HDC didn't meet.
I think it was on my list. Planning?
He didn't meet?
No.
Planning?
The first Wednesday of the month.
Planning? Planning? We'll defer that till next week then, and zoning board, I'll report out, I'll, I'll report out on zoning board. There was a variance for a garage, and that had some issues with regard to setbacks, and it, they voted three zero to grant the variance. There was another one with rebuilding a single-family residence on map four lot seventy-one again, and they voted to grant that variance. There was another one on map three lot fifty-nine dash thirty-nine, that was a, seeking a variance to allow a portion of our above-ground pools in the wetland and surface conservation district, and that was voted to allow the Conservation Commission, they had to review it first, so they didn't take any action there. And last but not least, Brookfield Investment was seeking a special exception and a variance to allow an excavation of approximately six to eight feet of material, which represented six, six hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet of excavation area from two adjacent properties. The board voted two zero with one abstention to continue the application till August thirtieth, because there was not enough members present to act on the application. And last but not least, the board voted three zero to appoint Vivian Blondo as an alternate to the two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen term. So, welcome back Vivian, she's back.
She said she missed it on me.
All right, well, she's a great addition, so. Anything else? We do have an, was it a non-meeting or? Any other business? What? No, we deferred to the next, till next week.
Whatever.
Okay. Is it motion to adjourn? Seconded by Nick, all those in favor? Aye. Right?
I don't snooze, you snooze, you didn't ask me for that.